Good evening, everyone. Could I please have your attention so we can open up the town council meeting for Thursday, May 26th? And please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as you can see, we look a little different tonight. We do have a quorum, but let me explain what the status is. I'm the vice chair, but Finley Rothaus, who's the chair, and this is our first meeting, the first meeting, I'm having to do the chair because Finley is not feeling well. Tom Cagnake is also excused because he has a business trip. Barbara Healy is on the phone because she can't be here, and thank God she's on the phone because we now have a quorum, right Barbara? Hello Barbara?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. And because she's on the phone, all motions have to be roll call votes, which is not normally the case, just to help you understand that. And Lon Woods is also excused. So, there is the three of us here, Andy Hunter, Nita Murphy, and myself, and we have Barbara on the phone, so we do have a quorum, thank God, because we have quite an agenda, and if we had to put that off, never mind having all you people have to come back again. So, we thank, we all thank you Barbara for being on the phone.
No problem.
One more thing.
Barbara, are you in an area of the house where nobody else is in the room with you?
I'm alone in the house.
All right, is there anybody else that may walk in?
Just my husband, Robert.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm in my office with the door closed, so he wouldn't hear anything anyways.
Thank you.
Great. Yep, thank you. Feel free to interrupt me at any time during the meeting, we're all doing this by ear. Okay, announcements. The town offices will be closed on Monday, May 30th, for the observance of Memorial Day, and we'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the brave men and women who have courageously made the ultimate sacrifice for this country. And just to let you know, I believe it's on Monday at 11 o'clock, their ceremonies, that's the Last Rest Cemetery. And afterwards, there's, is it the American Legion?
It's probably the Legion of the VFW.
Barbara, you know, don't you, the 1 o'clock?
Yes, after the ceremony at Last Rest, there'll be a remembrance ceremony at the VFW.
VFW.
I believe the American Legion is also having some type of ceremony, I don't have any details on that, I'm sorry, but they're the sponsors for this year's flags in the cemetery.
Very good, thank you Barbara. Okay, upcoming town council meetings, Wednesday, June 8th, that's going to be the retreat, an all-day retreat, it is open to the public, it's going to be held at Buckley's Great Stakes, and it's a work session, it's from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Thursday, June 9th, at 7:00 PM is a regular town council meeting, and Thursday, June 23rd, at 7:00 PM, another council meeting. And, that's it for the announcements. Okay, any comments from the press or public regarding any of the agenda items? No, okay. Recognitions, retirement, we have smiling faces over there. The town council will present a recognition award to Dean R. Sterns in recognition of his retirement from the Merrimack Public Works Department after more than 21 years of full-time service to the Highway Division. He was employed from April 30th, 2001, to May 31st, 2002. Employees with at least 10 years of service receive a plaque with town seal upon retirement. And with a few words, I'm going to go over and get the plaque and present it to you, but in the meantime, Laurie Barrett, who is the Highway Operations Manager, has a few kind words for you.
So, everything has a beginning and an end. Dean's beginning with the town of Merrimack was on April 30th, 2001, and his ending will be on May 31st, 2022. I'd like to give Dean two pieces of advice as he enters the next chapter of his life called retirement. Number one, keep busy, and number two, don't look back. The word retirement's kind of ugly, unacceptable, it makes you think of shuffling around in slippers and napping and quietly waiting your days away. So, we know that Dean is retiring from work, as he's known it for the last 21 years, the regular 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, five days a week, well, way more than that during snowstorms, but he isn't retiring from life. So, starting next Wednesday, when we're all heading to the Highway Garage, Dean will be starting a new chapter. He'll be hanging up his work boots and focusing his energies on more time with his family, his hobbies, turning the loam over in his garden, flipping the switch on his wood splitter, getting around to those projects that he said he'd do someday, and let's not forget the honey-do list. Without his full-time job getting in the way of his schedule, I'm sure he'll accomplish many of the projects, and Karen will likely create new ones. Life will be different, but there'll be much of this life that I hope he remembers and carries forward with him, the people he's met, the experiences he's shared, as well as the teamwork and the ups and downs of 21 years. Let's hope we're not that easy to forget. I hope the timing to start this new chapter is as right as it could be, and congratulations, and I wish you the best of luck in your retirement.
This is the plaque that he's going to be receiving. Upon the occasion of your retirement and recognition of the loyal and dedicated full-time service which you have contributed for more than 21 years to the Highway Division of the Merrimack Public Works Department, your dedication and devotion to duty has been a tremendous asset to the town of Merrimack. We wish to extend to you and our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty presented by the Merrimack Town Council and Town Manager. Congratulations. And the only thing I can say is, stay healthy so you can enjoy many years of retirement, and the honey-do list will just get longer, that's all. Congratulations. And very soon, it's not going to be long before you get the idea of, how did I ever work, I'm so busy? It's true, actually, you just reengage in other things, like the honey-do list. Anyway, okay, appointments. Annual review with the planning board. Mr. Best, you came in just exactly in the moment in time. Submitted by Planning Board Chair, Robert Best, per Town of Merrimack Charter Section 6-6, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the planning board. This agenda item is to highlight the board's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act on. And you walked in after the explanation of why there's only three here. But there is Barbara on the phone, so we have quorum.
Excellent.
Okay, so, but the world is listening to you, so you can go right ahead and present what's been happening with the planning board.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilor Harrington and other councilors, for the opportunity to be here. I guess it's sort of automatic that I'm on the agenda, it says Bob Best and Chair of the Planning Board, that's why I'm here. And I am glad to be the chair and to represent the other members of the Planning Board who put in a lot of hours and do a lot of work to help move along the town's business as it relates to those planning board functions. Great group of folks that are volunteering on the board, and pretty close to a full board now, which, you know, a lot of times recently I've come and talked about vacancies and spreading the good word, so right now we only have one alternate vacancy on the board. Let's see, some of the primary actions, since July 1st, which I think is roughly about the time that I was here last, so since last July 1st, 2021, the Planning Board's taken action on 45 applications, including but not limited to minor subdivisions, lot line adjustments, home occupations, and waivers of full site plan review. Some noteworthy among them is at 57 and 59 DW Highway, we reviewed a site plan for a 100,000 square foot warehouse building with 66,000 square foot manufacturing addition. At the Gilbert Crossing Site, owned by the Flatley Company, there was an approval for a 120,000 square foot high bay warehouse and 96 additional residential units. At 50, Robert Milligan Parkway, reviewed a site plan for a 323,750 square foot, 323750 square foot warehouse and distribution center. And although the applicant was pretty coy about who's going to occupy that warehousing and distribution center, the architectural plans looked very similar to ones operated by a company called Amazon, so I don't know if they'll be in town and be occupying that.
Wouldn't it be a coincidence?
What a coincidence, huh? Our former Brookstone Building, which was their world headquarters until the company faltered, was here in town and was vacant for a couple of years, and we heard a proposal to convert that to 90 apartments, and that was another one that the Planning Board had reviewed. Membership changes, Jamie Von Schoen and Brian Dano joined the board as full members, Maureen Tracy joined as an alternate member, and we have, as I mentioned before, one alternate vacancy that remains. My term, Jamie's term, and Nelson's term as an alternate are the three that are up this year for renewal. And so, I'll certainly be interested in finding out from Jamie and Nelson whether they wish to continue. And for my own part, I suspect that as long as it's the will of the town council to keep reappointing me, I'll keep trying. And if it's the will of the board to keep electing me to the chair, then I'll keep serving in that role for as long as they'll have me. So, that's an update on the significant actions of the board. I don't have any feedback from the board or any other items for which we would request special help. I think that we are approaching the initiation of our next iteration of the master plan, but you all know that, and that's been part of the capital budget for at least the last couple of years, and it's inching closer and closer.
When was the last one?
It was initiated in 2010 and adopted in 2013. It takes about two or three years to go through the process and really gather up the information. There's a lot of invitations out to the community to come and be involved with brainstorming sessions, to talk about priorities, and certain things that people would like to envision in the master plan. If you haven't had a chance to look through the master plan, it has sections that deal with all aspects of the use of the physical spaces in town, from recreational and open spaces, housing, commercial, utilities, transportation, all of those different sections are in there, and there's a general discussion about what we have for resources, what we have for unused or undeveloped parcels, and what sort of approach or initiatives we would like to work into each one of those different areas. And then the master plan is sort of the blueprint for any changes that we would adopt to our site plan review, our subdivision review, or that we would propose to the town council for amendments to the zoning ordinance. And it's an important time because between adoptions of the master plan, we frequently have people come to the planning board and say that things should be different. Whatever this plan is, I don't like it, I don't want it to be approved, we shouldn't have that in this area, or we should, or we should have more of another thing. And in order for those things to come about, it has to have its roots in that master plan. That's where it all begins, and then it sort of develops and fosters from there. And so, you only get that open window a few times. So, there's my stump speech on the master plan.
Good stump. Anybody have questions regarding the planning board? Barbara, do you have anything you'd like to ask or comment on?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, the only thing I've verbalized, because the community does, is just all the apartments. I mean, it's, we hear about it, we know it's a common complaint, it also needs to be understood that people own their land, and as long as they respond to the appropriate ordinances or regulations, the planning board cannot deny them, but they have, they work within a framework.
Oh, absolutely so.
You have all that, so that's a comment, just to be able to address it anyway.
It is, it is an important topic. On a statewide level, this is a hot issue for the governor to support workforce housing and senior housing, and in some sense, other types of housing are interconnected with those because when you develop one kind of housing, you free up housing stock that was used for another thing, and it makes it more available for virtually every level of housing. But on a statewide level, New Hampshire's about 20,000 housing units short of what's needed to supply the workforce that's needed today for the businesses that are already here. For perspective, the city of Concord, New Hampshire, has 17,000 something households in it. So, you need to adopt a statewide, about the same number of housing as you'd find in a medium-sized city, that's how far short we are. That's what the demand is that's out there for housing. Now, it isn't Merrimack's job to answer all of that call, of course, and we don't. But there is significant demand being located between the state's two highest population cities for a lot of housing in this area, and that's why you see developers that want to build it. And as you mentioned, they do have property rights, we can impose regulations that talk about how you do it, but you certainly don't have the ability to prohibit somebody from using their land in the way that they intended to, as long as they're complying with your planning and zoning regulations. But as many times as you hear people say, I wish that there weren't more, there's an equal number of people who are glad to have them. And it's obviously important to the businesses that they have places for their employees to live. There's a huge expansion, for example, on the way at Fidelity that's been making the news, and those kinds of things can only exist if the people who will work there have someplace to live.
Any other comments?
Thank you for the chance to comment on that.
Yeah, well, it's talked about a lot in the community.
It is.
I mean, it's difficult, and I've been here since 71, it's a different kind of town, but it doesn't matter where you go, it's a different kind of town.
Absolutely.
Southern New Hampshire's growing, when I walked, moved into town, there were 7,000 people. You can't expect that it's going to stay that when half of Massachusetts, of which I was one, has been moving up, so it is what it is unfortunately. Just change, hopefully we can maintain a certain amount of character in it, and I think that's the best we can try to do.
I think that's a great point as well. Merrimack has got a unique geography compared to a lot of towns, with the turnpike kind of going through it and creating this east side and west side difference, and almost all of the apartment buildings are on the, between the river and the turnpike, and on the east side of town. And on the west side, there are a few subdivisions, but far, far fewer of the developments are on that side, and so you can have the relatively rural character and the larger lots and the broader neighborhoods, and at the same time, you can have higher density living for folks that want that. Big, strong trend in the way that land use is developing, and what younger folks are looking for, is much higher density, what they're calling walkable communities, where they can kind of get around from place to place without using their car, or maybe even without even owning a car. In order to be able to do that, you've got to be able to get to some transportation sources or, and also walk to a grocery store, and a restaurant, and a library, and a park, and a dry cleaner, and a doctor, and all of the kinds of things that fit together in people's lives. We don't have a high level of walkability, but the more of it that you can produce, the better off you are.
But the other debate, the other debate is, that's a city versus a country area, urban versus, and I've lived in both, so I understand.
Yeah, it definitely is.
There's pros and cons.
Definitely is a tension between what's a city and what isn't. I think, I think of it more in terms of what the people are looking for who have a desire to live in your town.
Gotcha.
And that's sort of the drive, the younger, the population that you're after, the more they're interested in that sort of more compact.
Gotcha. Andy?
You mentioned walkability, and I watch the planning board, and you see a lot of these mixed-use projects come up, where the original plan was to have some commercial mixed in with some residential, and then as time goes on, the commercial piece of that goes away, and it's another apartment complex. I've heard you state on, during a planning board, you're kind of litmus test as you go back, and would I have proved this in its orig, you know, if this was the original plan? But isn't, isn't that the kind of area, that mixed-use area, that's going to draw that younger generation to town? You know, where they can walk out of their apartment and go down and have a restaurant, maybe on the, you know, on the street level or around the block, instead of just building, you know, straight residential apartment complex?
Yes, truly mixed-use development is exactly that, what the, what that I was mentioning is the younger folks are looking for, and maybe for an example of it, the Tuscan Village in Salem is an example, where there's a whole lot of retail, but there's also residential and apartment and all of that. And to the extent that we can get that, that's what we're after when we talk about mixed-use. There's been a lot of upheaval and a lot of applicants telling us that they can't achieve that, and then it's up to the planning board to decide what to do with it, and it's always been my desire to try to hold people to those obligations when they make them. At the same time, you sort of have to look at them and decide whether they make sense. Some of the mixed-use that we've talked about are, you know, one small restaurant in the front of a condo on the north side of town, is that really mixed-use, is that really walkable, or was that just sort of an excuse to call it mixed-use? And is it really simply a residential neighborhood with something stuck into it? So, complicated stuff. And COVID has turned all of that on its head again. The use of retail space and office space is completely different and changing again. I don't know where it'll lead us.
Wouldn't that, it'd be nice to have something like the Tuscan Market, a project like that, that is truly mixed-use and stays mixed-use. Again, I don't know if the roots of that lie in the master plan, or how we, how we try to keep those projects mixed-use, but it would be, it would be nice to be able to do that. Again, I know you can't force a landowner to do something he doesn't want to do, but...
And some of those more ambitious projects are really, they take large parcels and a lot of money. And the outlet mall, and the development at the lower end of the outlet mall, I think is probably where you heard me make comments about would I have approved this from the beginning. And ultimately, whatever comes out of that, there'll be some residential at the bottom of the outlet mall, and you've got commercial, obviously, as a part of the outlet mall itself, and restaurants and things, and so you can look at the whole parcel and weigh whether it amounts to being a mixed-use parcel, or just look at the bottom development by itself and say, is that a mixed-use parcel? There's different ways to look at it. If you look at Merrimack 360, where Planet Fitness is, and Trampoline Park and all that, and there's an apartment building behind it, and it's originally part of a mixed-use development with East Ridge next to it, and it's a smaller example, it's certainly not as grand as Tuscan Village, but it's one small way that one of these mixed-use kind of developments, and more compact developments, might fit in in the right spot. Tricky stuff, though, I mean, even, even on that scale, you know, that's a many, many million-dollar development, and it's a tiny little mixed-use development. Hard stuff, yeah. Thank you for the questions, though.
Nancy?
Yeah, I was just going to say, in addition to the young people, we have senior citizens who may not be able to drive anymore, may not have cars, they too need that affordable housing in an area where they have access to a physician and a grocery store and that kind of thing. So, you know, I know we hear a lot from those community members who say, with all this building, yeah, there's a lot of building, but it's not affordable, and it's not meeting the needs of the people that are already here. So, that's, I know a level of frustration that, I know, much of it's out of your hands, but definitely a need that, that I think we're aware of and that we hear from.
That's a great point, too. It wasn't this year, I think it was the year before, the property on East Chamberlain Drive, it was developed, and that's senior housing development. Those are ones where we can support it in our regulation, and we have a senior housing overlay kind of over the downtown area where there's some advantages to developers, but keeping that project ultimately affordable at the end of the day requires a level of a higher density in terms of what they're allowed to build in order to keep that price down, and it usually takes a bigger parcel to support that. And I think the last time we did an inventory on what there are for larger parcels, there's only one or two parcels on the DW Highway corridor that are in that 35 to 50 acre size where you could support a big apartment development like that. So, the East Chamberlain one did come forward, and it is senior housing. The one almost directly across DW Highway from that, more across from Merrimack 360, I forgot the name of that community.
Workforce?
Yeah, it's workforce housing, but I forgot the name of the development itself, or the name of the developer.
Neighborhoods?
Yeah, it's Neighborhoods, that's it, thank you. 30 or 40 workforce housing townhouses, so those, those come forward when a developer is ready, willing, and able to do that, and we certainly can support it as much as we can in the master plan, but we ultimately don't get to take an applicant that comes forward with, with a market rate proposal and say, no, 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 you've got to limit it to being affordable. We do ask them at each time that we see them, what, you know, what are your, what's your target for rent, or what's your target for price? And whatever they say doesn't necessarily become binding upon them, but it is interesting to know for different reasons. I wrote an article about workforce housing for the Bar Journal last month, and researching it, I learned that the average rent for a two-bedroom apartment in Manchester is $1,800, and with the utilities, it rounds out to right about $2,000 to live in a two-bedroom apartment. And affordable is based on a calculation of how much of your income you spend on housing, and 30% or below is the target for what's affordable. And at $2,000 a month, it takes household income that's above the median in New Hampshire. So, the median New Hampshire household cannot afford the median apartment in Manchester. And it's mostly a supply issue, and it's also a regulatory issue where if you place standards on lot size, or density, or other things that make it more expensive, you can't deliver that apartment for $2,000. And $2,000 is probably what a lot of people would still think of as, boy, that's pretty darn high, that's, that's a lot for a two-bedroom apartment. I'm glad I never had to pay $2,000 for a two-bedroom apartment.
Okay, all set? Okay, thank you very much, Barb, appreciate it.
Hey, thank you, and I'm sorry if I took longer than a couple of minutes.
No, no, well, I instigated the question too, so I'm partially guilty.
Have a great day. Thank you, Barbara, and everyone else.
Okay, there is no public hearing. Legislative updates from the state reps, I have a couple to read. Wanted from Bill Boyd, Representative Bill Boyd, House approves aid to municipalities. Terry Royd, Roy, a Republican from Deerfield, released the following statement after the New Hampshire House passed SB 401, making appropriations to the Department of Transportation for local highway aid and to the body, worn, and dashboard camera fund, and permitting the Department of Transportation to operate dash cameras on a voice vote. Do you even know what that's about? Okay, I'll read it, I'm not sure if I understand it. SB 401 is further evidence that Republicans in the legislature are living up to campaign promises by sending out municipalities over $60 million, towns can address much-needed road and bridge construction while delivering much-needed property tax relief to our constituents. State revenues have been coming in higher than anticipated as a result of responsible policies from the legislature, and the passage of this bill allows us to send some of those funds back to the taxpayer. From Representative Mooney, greetings. Last week, the House and Senate Committee of Conference agreed to leave the transfer of Continental Boulevard to Merrimack out of HB 2022, the 10-year transportation plan. Today, the full House approved the Committee of Conference report, this is excellent news for Merrimack. The state was trying to give the town Continental Boulevard, we fought it, and for now, we won. Okay, the representatives won, and I thank them for their representation. The other item, number two, from Maureen, is the House and Senate Committee of Conference agreed to a Senate amendment... agreed to a Senate amendment to House Bill fifteen forty-seven, an act relative to perfluorinated chemical remediation in soil and procedure for certain hazardous waste generators, which does three things. It amends the PFAS remediation loan fund grant section. It allows the DES to establish a rebate program to assist impacted private well users with water treatment or connection to public water systems. And it adds a whopping twenty-five million to the PFAS remediation loan fund. This has also passed the House and it is now going to the governor for signature. Another big win for Merrimack. And last, the filing period to run for state representative is June first through June tenth. Respectfully submitted, Representative Mooney, Merrimack. And that's all I have to read, I believe. Town manager report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got a long one, so just bear with me, please.
Give me a rest.
June second is the next household hazardous waste collection. This is a little different than in the past. It is on a Thursday night from three PM to seven PM at twenty-five Crown Street in Nashua. As always, for fifteen dollars, Merrimack residents can bring up to ten gallons or twenty pounds of household hazardous waste per vehicle. An additional charge of one dollar per gallon above the ten gallons will apply. They accept cash or checks made payable to the National Regional Solid Waste District. Rain barrels for seventy-two dollars and compost bins, sixty-eight dollars, are now available for purchase at the transfer station. These items are sold at cost with no profit going to the town. It's just an extra feature that we try to do for everybody who is into having rain barrels for their gardens or wants to start composting. The annual townwide sweep, sweep, street sweeping is complete. The program swept all of the town's four hundred and forty-six paved roads and all municipal parking lots. Do you want an excuse to get outside, to get a little exercise? Do you want help keeping Merrimack clean? The town's adopted road program may be for anyone who's interested. If you are interested in sponsoring an adopted road, please contact the Highway Division at six oh three four two three eight five five one to get more information. The paving portion of the summer roadwork plan is complete. Remaining work includes placing gravel shoulders adjacent to the new pavements and striping the roads. Work is expected to be completed over the next couple of weeks. This 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 weekend next, the Highway Division of Public Works is hosting Merrimack's first grade classes from the three elementary schools for a tour of the facility and fun activities. Highlights of the field trip include students finding their homes on a large-scale map and making painted handprints on wing plows so they can wave to their families as we plow the roads in the winter. Merrimack TV will premiere the High School Spring Concert this Friday, May twenty-seventh at seven PM on channel twenty-one or HD channel ten seventy-one. We're on MerrimackTV dot com and streaming devices. The program includes performances from the concert band, jazz band and chorus. The Police Department and Merrimack TV have produced a short PSA about mindful driving, specifically paying attention to school buses and the safety of the students. The PSA the PSA will be made available on the town's Facebook page and will show on our cable channels. We kindly ask residents to share the video to help spread the word about being mindful drivers and avoiding ticketing or causing is causing causing injuries around school buses. And finally, the Merrimack Public Waste recently hosted students from the Founder's Academy at the Highway Facility to discuss public works, leadership and challenges faced. The program was well received and included students' leadership activities to protect their protect their eggs from a thirty-five-foot fall from the bucket truck. The one lingering question that everyone has and inquiring minds want to know, did their eggs break, Kyle? Good for them.
So fifty percent survived.
Survived. So no scrambled eggs for them. That's actually all I have. Thank you.
That's it. Very good. Okay, we're going to move to consent agenda and it's my request that we do these separately. I know in the past we've done them combined, but I can read one and then someone could perhaps move the agenda as for approval. Okay, the first one is consideration of changes to chapter one fifty-eight sewer use of the Merrimack Town Code. The Town Council to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to chapter one fifty-eight sewer use of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to charter article five, Roman numeral five. And I'd like to have a go right ahead.
I'd like to move that we accept the recommended changes to chapter one fifty-eight sewer use of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to char- excuse me, charter article five.
Second. Do I have a second? Okay, we need to do a roll call vote. So the motion would be mine, Nancy Murphy, second, about Andy Hunter. Roll call vote, Nancy?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Nancy, yes. Four zero zero. Thank God. Okay, second consent agenda item, the Town Council will finalize committee assignments for the current year. And what I'm going to do is quickly read it if that's okay. Okay. Chair Finley Rothaus, Vice Chair May Nancy Harrington, Alda Community Center Lon Woods, authorized sewer representative Paul McKelly, Cemetery trustee, Cemetery King, we used to call him, Paul McKelly, Chamber of Commerce Paul McKelly, Commission on the Environmental and Public Health Impacts of Perfluorinated Chemicals, Nancy Murphy, Conservation Commission Andy Hunter, Heritage Commission Barbara Healy, Highway Safety Committee Finley Rothaus, Merrimack Youth Association Nancy Harrington, National Regional, I'm sorry, Nashua Regional Planning Commission Tom Koenig, New Hampshire Rail Transit Authority, Andy Hunter, Parks and Recreation Committee Lon Woods, Planning Board Voting Member Barbara Healy and Alternate Member Tom Koenig and Town Center Committee Finley Rothaus. So would someone like to move?
Best presented.
Okay, so the motion made by Andy, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Okay, roll call vote. Nancy?
Okay, I was just, I was just gonna say.
You have a question?
I do have a question, just on the my list. It says Commission on Environmental Public Health Impacts. I just think, it's gonna, nope.
There's no discussion on consent. You're gonna move it off to consent.
That's great.
Okay, all right. Forget it. It's a typo kind of thing.
It's a typo, okay.
All right.
Thank you for the clarification. So roll call vote?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Nancy, yes. Four zero zero. Consent is passed. Okay, all business. Okay, this is the Town Council to consider entering into a purchase and sale agreement to convey the landlocked parcel at tax map six E dash one, lot fifteen dash one, one oh nine Front Street, known as the Old Pump House to resident and the daughter Gary Bailey for the purchase price of one hundred, I'm sorry, one dollar. One hundred. He probably had a heart attack for a second. For one dollar. And to discuss this, presented is Town Engineer, Deputy Public Works Director Dawn Tuamala. And we've had this prior.
Yes. This has come up several months ago, almost a year ago now, I think. It went back, back and forth, back and forth. We had done some research and got our legal counsel involved in the presentation and the research of this. And that's what Dawn's here to talk about, our findings. The council asked Dawn to go back and and talk to legal counsel about some of the findings that were there about where the property sits. Basically, this property is one hundred percent landlocked. The only ones, the Baileys, would be the only ones that would benefit from this property. We actually have an easement and we have to go to the Baileys every time we want to go and use this property, so it just makes sense for the town to sell this parcel, actually two parcels to the Baileys for one dollar each. Dawn can express that much more eloquently than I can right now.
I'll try.
Go ahead, Dawn.
The Baileys are here. Gary and Deb are sitting in the back. So this is in regards to the Old Pump House, also known as the Spring Lot. It's a purchase and sale of lot six E dash one, lot fifteen dash one. Whoops. Oh, no, it went away. Should have been right. There it is. Okay. All right. So to get your bearings, the Merrimack River is on to the east side than the railroad track. The property, the Bailey's property is on Depot Street and to the west of this is US Route three, Daniel Webster Highway. Also, there's Front Street that comes in and the very end is the cul-de-sac that's at the end of Front Street. So the property we're talking about is the little green thing that's I've highlighted here and the Bailey's lot is the lot that is in red. So this is just an aerial of the same area. So this is the town lot in green and Bailey's is up and around, which I didn't highlight on this one. I probably should have. We, I spent a lot of time looking for a plan. The deeds indicated a Hyde plan, Gerald Hyde, back in nineteen forty-six. That plan actually has proven key to this entire property. Because as you saw on the tax map, the lot shows it in the corner. That would mean some of the other lots around could have rights. I also researched every lot around the property and nobody else had any rights. The only people that might have rights would be the railroad. And I can explain to you why. So this is the Hyde plan. Lo and behold, Gerald Hyde is deceased and another surveyor had his records. And that surveyor was very sick and he was in the middle of transferring some of his records to another surveyor. So I got in the middle of that last transfer and it took a little bit of time, but they did dig out this plan and they did find it for me. I've highlighted, I brought, enlarged it and the Bailey's property is what's shown in red. The lot is actually that the town owns is in two tracts and it's in the middle of the Bailey's property. It is not in the corner. Bailey's deed goes all the way around their entire property and then excludes the two tracts that is comprised of the town's lot. The first tract is this, what's called the concrete tank. That is the spring or the cistern that was the first tract the railroad actually owned. And they indicated, there's indication that they sold it to the town. Unfortunately, we don't have that deed. I went back to seventeen seventy-one. The deed does not exist. But it is presumed and everybody else, everybody has always called it the town lot. And even on the railroad plans itself, it indicates that it was, but the physical deed itself I do not have. So that has to be sold under a certain, in a certain way, which the, our town attorney has prepared, prepare that properly. The second tract is an L-shaped piece that is ten feet wide and surrounds that tank on two sides. And there's a pump house on there and this used to be used for water. And it has not been used in a very long time. I will say that there was no easement to get to this property. We have no right of way. We have no way to get to this property. So even if we sold it to somebody else, they have no way to get to it. It is within the Bailey's property. So we we did probably from, you know, years of years of use, but that does not transfer. That would not transfer to anybody else. So we are here tonight to ask you to allow the town manager to enter into the purchase and sales agreement and then to sell these two parcels for a dollar apiece, so that would be two dollars instead of one dollar. And this is the language that the town attorney had come up with for, as far as the motion.
We have it.
You have that, okay.
Right.
So other than that, I don't have a whole lot to.
Any questions, Nancy or Andy?
The one question I have, reading back through some of the previous, when this was in front of the Town Council before, there was some discussions that maybe some of this contained asbestos. If we sell this as is.
The asbestos has been removed.
It has been.
Yes, it has. I did skip through that. We were actually here before the Town Council in July of two thousand eighteen. I've been doing this for four years. That was brought up at that meeting. We spent thousands removing that asbestos. The next thing that happened was a question on the water that was coming out of the cistern and whether or not it was contaminated. We spent three years with DES and they have been testing it. They tested it at least twice a year for all the time and they have released it. They said there isn't, it's all within tolerable. And I have all the reports if you need, they're about eighty pages apiece if you'd like them.
I trust you.
Nancy, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Barbara, would, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
I will entertain a motion.
One of you?
Okay, I I move to convey the two parcels that make up the tax parcel, six E dash one dash one five dash one, as is, where is, to Gary Bailey by quick claim deed for the surrounding parcel and by deed without covenants for the inner parcel known collectively as the Old Pump House for two dollars total. On the basis that the parcels are collectively point zero seven eight acres are landlocked, are contained within the Bailey's parcel, consistent of the town's former pump house consists of the town's former pump house, which is no longer in use and for these reasons has no value to the town or anyone else other than Mr. Bailey and to authorize Town Manager McKelly to execute all documents necessary to affect this boat and convey the parcels.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I don't have to look to see who's gonna do the second. Okay, motion made by Andy Hunter, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Roll call vote, Nancy?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Nancy, yes. Four zero zero. And it passes. Two yeses in the in the audience. Thank you very much, Dawn. Okay, on to new business. Appointment of trustee of trust funds alternate member and Chris, I'm not sure, does he need to come up or just?
No, this is just like any appointment that we would do normally unless you want to bring Chris up to discuss this.
The Town Council to consider the trustees of trust funds nomination and recommendation to appoint Liz Petritas. Is it close enough? As an alternate member to the trustees of the trust funds in accordance with RSA thirty-one colon twenty-two and Charter Article six dash two A. The thing that I want to highlight is we do have all the information here, but this will be effective as of July first. There's one meeting left for the rest of the year because all the committees go from July first to June thirtieth. And if she got appointed this month, she'd be one shy off the routine schedule. So.
That's because the charter article that was amended is a one-year appointment.
Right. Okay, so that doesn't mean she can't attend. Of course, she's an alternate member anyway, so it'd be a matter of not voting, but anyway. I am open to it. Chris, do you want to say anything or does your recommendation letter from the trustees say it?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, the statute that makes this possible just says one year. So to me, it would make more sense to make the appointment now rather than July first. Trustees don't meet in July. And it would still come up within the same cycle. When you go around to do your renewal appointments next year, you do most of the appointments on the pre-work and so forth in May and June, so it would fall into that same cycle. And that would be more consistent with the statute.
Yeah, but we have the charter as well, so I guess.
I think the statute far outweighs the charter.
Well, we have two different opinions.
If you do it July first, it just, when we're going through the appointments, we don't miss it. Because we send out a letter usually thirty days in advance asking if people would like to be reappointed. Because we send out a letter usually thirty days in advance asking if people would like to be reappointed. This way, when we send the letter to the trustee of trust funds thirty days in advance to see if they would start, have any recommendations, it would just be less apt to be looked over or, or not taken into account. And things happen, we get busy, May, June, very busy in May and June in the office.
Including in the normal scheduling.
It would just be part of the normal schedule when we do everything for the committees.
Part of my thought is no harm, no foul to the extent that she's an alternate and you do, you are full and it's only one month, so I'm not sure. I understand your point, Chris, but I don't, it's also how, no harm, no foul, my opinion. Does anyone else have a different opinion? Okay, okay, so we need a motion?
Is the will of the board then to do it effective one July?
Yes.
Is that what we're doing? So, then I move to approve the trustee of trust funds nomination and recommendation to appoint Liz Petritas as an alternate member of the trustee of trust funds in accordance with RSA thirty-one colon two-two and chapter article six dash two A effective one July twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Andy Hunter, second by Nancy Murphy. Roll call, vote, Nancy?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Nancy, yes, so it's four zero zero and why don't you come on up and we'll do your oath.
I, Liz Petritas, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent to me as an alternate member of the trustees of trust funds according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God. Need to sign anything?
Now you have to sign some stuff. And thank you very much for offering to work in this capacity. Thank you. Okay, moving along, new business, item number two. I would like to request to consolidate or put in sequence number two and number four because both of them are dealing with Babusick Bridge information. So, I'm going to move number four up to number three without objection. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, number four will become number three now and number three will become number four, does that make sense to you Kyle?
It does, thank you.
Okay, new business number two, request to withdraw from road infrastructure capital reserve fund consideration of combining the wire road intersection project with the US three bridge project. Okay. Is this? Oh, okay, the letter that you submitted obviously explains it in more detail, but I'm sure you're going to be presenting.
I am, yes, thank you.
Wait a sec Kyle? I just want to preface this that this is not something new. This has been in the works for a really long time. This bridge is the bridge by Piningberg, by the MYA building. We've been talking about this bridge for the fifteen years that I've been, eighteen years I've been with the town of Merrimack. Looking at getting in on the, the ten-year capital improvement plan, getting on the, the bridge list, things of that sort. Over the last couple of years, it's been elevated a little bit because of the state's red brush, red bridge program. They come out and inspect the bridges to make sure and it's a culvert bridge. So, there's a culvert running over it, it's not like a steel regular bridge that you would see on the highways. So, I just want to let you know that this project has been in the works for a really long time. The wire road intersection project has been in the works almost as long as the bridge project itself. We both have these in the capital improvement plan, so this is nothing new, it's been out there. Kyle's coming before you because there's been kind of a change of guard up at the state, so to speak, that looked at these projects and said, makes sense to combine them, doesn't it? And we're like, yeah, so, but Kyle's here to explain everything and what needs to be done.
Thank you Paul, thank you town councillors. So, I'm going to try and go through this sort of as quickly as I can, but there's, there's a lot here and there's a lot of complication that's been going on and especially in the past couple of weeks. So, I'd like to first off thank Paul for allowing me to postpone this from the May fifth meeting to tonight as, as a lot of this information is still coming new and, and even since I wrote the memo for your packets, but... So, I wanted to start, so we have two projects in the state's, state NHDOT ten-year plan for the Route Three corridor, namely the US three bridge over Babusick Brook and the Daniel Webster Highway Wire Road intersection. You can see both of them on this map here. I'll start by giving some background on each of the projects. The Route Three Bridge, as Paul mentioned, we've been working on this for a, a number of years. Officially, it became part of the ten-year plan bridge program back in two thousand thirteen when the town council approved submitting for state estimate for the project and became included in the ten-year plan back then. At that time, the bridge was not on the, the state red list unlike today where, where it is. You can see in the picture, the bridge, as Paul mentioned, is, is more of a culvert style bridge, it's a, it's an arch, a masonry arch bridge. And you can, it's hard to see in the picture a little bit, but you can see spalling on the wing walls. There's concrete falling, exposing rebar in the arch itself. And certainly if you've walked the corridor on the top side of the bridge along Daniel Webster, there's not much shoulder there. The guardrail is substandard and, and really there, there's quite a, quite a number of issues in this location. So, we've been working on the project for a while. The, the existing bridge was built in nineteen thirty-three, so it's certainly given, given the town its due and in fact was built when this section of Daniel Webster was a state road, so prior to us even owning it. The proposed structure that we're going to put in is similar to the bridges we've put upstream on the Babusick Brook, namely the, the two on Bedford Road, Wire Road, Bean Road and McGaw Bridge Road. This is the final structure for the town on Babusick Brook and the proposed structure is going to be a hundred twenty-foot I-beam with concrete deck bridge. Stepping over to the Wire Road project, this is a project that was included in the ten-year plan four years ago. It started with a submittal by the town to the National Regional Planning Commission as a, as a safety project and it was included in the ten-year plan for that purpose. The, okay, sorry, lost my train there. So, this project would include sidewalks, in addition to improving safety on the intersection, it would include sidewalks up to Twin Bridge Road and down to, imagine with the sidewalk at the library, which would be great for the corridor. Some of the project alternatives are a stop sign as we have it today, but maybe improving the geometry. The biggest issue with the intersection, of course, is the, the terrible geometry of it. And as you're sitting on Wire Road, it's really, really hard to look to your left on that sharp angle to see what's coming and there's been a number of accidents over the years due to that geometry. So, one option, project alternative that the consultant will look at is keeping it a stop sign and just improving the geometry. Another option is putting a traffic signal in. And finally, the, the third option would be a roundabout. And I didn't put it on here, but of course the do-nothing alternative is, is always a viable option as well. So, that's what will come out of the, the, the initial study. Some other considerations on this project that we're going to look at is the possibility of adding a fourth leg to the intersection for the MYA property. The current ingress egress for MYA is a little further south from here. You can see the MYA building in the picture towards the bottom. The, the exit for, for MYA is in the queuing lanes for the Babusick Lake signal. So, during higher peak traffic times, it's really hard to take a left out of that facility. So, this would, this would improve that. And how the, how the arrangement would be made, do we keep the driveway as an enter and the, the new driveway as an exit? Those are the kind of details that'd be, that would come out during the, the study. And then one other consideration that we've talked about with the town council in the past, councillor Harrington may remember this, is what to do with Church Street. So, Church Street is just north of the library and it's a very steep road, again, very poor geometry connection to Daniel Webster. And in fact, there was a pretty bad accident with a, a, a child on a bicycle not too many years ago at that intersection. We've had a, a number of talks with the town council about the possibility of discontinuing the connection of Church Street to Daniel Webster and that's something we'll have to talk a little bit more about as this project progresses. So, just a little more background on, on kind of where each project is. The bridge project is in the state aid bridge program for the design portion by way of explanation of the bridge program. That's funded from the state gas tax. And so, it's money that's dedicated from the state gas tax for the sole purpose of reconstructing and, and repairing municipal bridges. And it's an eighty-twenty program with the state picking up eighty percent, the municipality picking up twenty percent. That's the program where most of our bridges got reconstructed under. The, the construction portion of this project is currently slated to be in the mobile program, which is a federal bridge program. It stands for municipal off, off-highway-bridge-something, I forget the acronym. But it's a federal program, so any, any design we do on the project, even though it's under state aid bridge, we still have to design it to meet federal requirements. Because the construction will certainly have to be under federal requirements. You may remember the feasibility study was completed in October twenty twenty. Prior to that, we had a public information meeting over at Mastrocola on, in August of twenty twenty where we received some fairly good public comment and, and certainly helped shape the, the design of the bridge. In April of last year, twenty-one, due to funding issues we were having with the prog, project. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I heard something. The town council approved fifty-nine thousand dollars for Public Works to hire our consultant to, to a FEMA application for the brick program. And that was due to a, a funding gap and I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slides. The, we ended up getting to a point of the study that it, it became obvious that the program wasn't going to work for our, our project. So, we closed out that purchase order with twenty thousand remaining and we're actually currently seeking a different program through the state FEMA folks, which is called the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And this is far more promising in that it's state-funded rather than federal, well, it's still federal fund, but it's a state pot of money rather than a nationwide pot of money. So, we're competing against applications in the state rather than nationwide. Additionally, they got a big charge of money from ARPA funding that they don't normally have and they have to commit to projects. So, we feel pretty good about this program. The other nice part is unlike the brick study, DOT is actually participating in this one. And so, they're going to pay eighty percent of the, the work to, to do this application. And the town, so the town share of it is actually going to be about fourteen thousand dollars, which is less than what we had remaining on the purchase order, so, so that's kind of good news.
But the money we spent on, I just want to let everybody know, the money we spent on the brick program didn't, isn't to waste because a lot of the information that NHDOT is looking for, we already compiled with the brick program. So, we did, it's not like we threw money away.
It's transferable information.
Yes.
Yep, that's a great point, thank you Paul. So, the Wire Road project is, it's, as I mentioned, it's a safety project funded out of the Highway Safety Improvement Program. Again, that's federal money, eighty-twenty split between state and municipality and it's a project that was scheduled for twenty twenty-seven. So, at this point, we haven't done anything on this project because it's still a number of years out and it wasn't on our radar yet for, for getting into the, the details of design. Just a, a glimpse of what's in the ten-year plan for each of the projects. The, the bridge project, the preliminary engineering is scheduled for twenty twenty-four, that's the phase we're in now. As you recall, we'd like to get a head start on our bridge projects to be able to take advantage of different programs and, and we've done really well over the years.
We've been very lucky.
Most notably getting the, the construction of the Turkey Hill Bridge at no cost to the town due to the, I forget which funding, ERA funding back when that was, was around. So, we're, we're ahead of schedule on the preliminary engineering, but that was scheduled for twenty twenty-four as was any right-of-way acquisitions that we'll need to make. And construction is scheduled for twenty twenty-five and twenty-six. Wire Road is, conversely, everything is scheduled for twenty twenty-seven. Now, back in October of two thousand nineteen, which was the last round of ten-year plan, the ten-year plan process, I spoke and, and some representatives spoke and, and councillors also spoke about combining these two projects because it makes sense with their proximity. It didn't happen in that ten-year plan process. As Paul mentioned, we have a new project manager at DOT who, he's taken a bunch, better look at, at projects and we're lucky that three projects we have in Merrimack were all assigned to him. And as he was reviewing some of the preliminary design plans from what, from the bridge project, he commented, hey, isn't this kind of overlap with Wire Road? It is. And so, he was really the thrust to get, get the change moving on the DOT side. And there's more benefit to it as well. So, the, the, we, we do see a benefit of cost savings by, by combining the project. Certainly, it's going to eliminate reconstructing the bridge approach work when we take on the Wire Road side. It'll all be done at once and save us from looking silly, quite frankly. It better balances the road work and the bridge work. Oftentimes, the, there, there's still dirt work involved with a bridge project, but it's so limited that your unit prices are, are higher because the dirt contractors, you know, they still have to mobilize, still have to bring the big equipment. They're working in a smaller area and it's really hard for them to make the same money. So, by combining it with a road project, where, where we should see better unit pricing on our, our, our dirt work for the bridge. work for the bridge. And of course, there'll only be one contract to administer. So during the construction engineering phase, rather than having two contracts two years apart, we'll just have one contract. And the biggest benefit to combining the projects, of course, is reduced aggravation to the users of the corridor. Limiting it to a two-plus-year project rather than a two-plus-year project plus another year will be a huge benefit. I thought I had another slide, but I'll talk a little bit more about the funding gap. So, and it showed up on the 10-year plan. Here's the slide I was looking for. So you'll see on the US-3 bridge portion, the third line down says "Construction, 2025, $2 million nonpar." So that's that funding gap we had in the project between what the estimate for the bridge originally was till the preliminary design phase was becoming more clear, and the state didn't have the funds to cover that increase. And that's why we ventured into the BRIC study. With the combining of the projects, the state has made the commitment that even if we don't get the HMGP grant, they will cover their eighty percent of that $2 million. So this is a picture of what the 10-year plan today looks like. At some point, following our meeting tonight, if it's approved by the town council, the state will do an amendment to the 10-year plan, and this will be updated to show all of the funds, either being through the mobile program, which is the federal highway program, or the $2 million will come from the FEMA program. If we get the FEMA part of it, like I had talked about with the BRIC program, that's a ninety-ten, or normally it's an eighty-twenty program. Now, they have some ARPA money, and that's now a ninety-ten program, which means FEMA would pick up ninety percent of the cost of the bridge, not the total cost of the project, just the bridge and the detour road, which is about two and a half million of this total. And the state would pick up eighty percent of the remaining ten percent, and the town would pick up twenty percent of the remaining ten percent. So our share would go down by a lot on that bridge portion.
Just to let you know, with all the numbers, I had spoken with Paul to be able to get an appreciation and understanding. So with that ninety percent, that's a little different than what you and I spoke.
Yeah, that would be a little different, and we'd have to take out of the capital reserve fund, Jess.
Probably less.
Yes. What we talked about would be the cap, the top line.
Okay. Just to be able to let the councillors know, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I need to put things in simple terms. And this is my own simple-term explanation. Okay, so the cost to combine is 950,000. We've already had approval for 300,000.
Correct.
Which would leave 650,000 that we need to approve from the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund. But that's the accounting. That's not, we're really spending that money. We have to approve it. And then, when the invoice comes in, the state actually pays what we determined was eighty percent, and we would actually pay from the capital reserve funds twenty percent, which is gonna be a little better because of the ninety percent now. So the bottom line is, in the end, the combined will be 950,000. The state will pay 760,000 of it. The town will be responsible capped at 190,000. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Does that simplify it for everybody?
And I just want to add one...
It helped me.
Yeah, I just want to add one part into that. So that's just for the design phase.
Right.
That's feasibility study through bidding.
But again, it's for both projects.
For both projects combined, correct.
Which we would probably end up paying more if it was separated, because it's a matter of time, too. Because the Wire Road was gonna be later, and obviously, the cost would probably have gone up in the meantime.
Correct. That's the presumption.
So does that, it helped me, does that help?
It did. The one question I had, what piece of it changed to ninety percent that the state covers?
So the, so that $2 million gap is what we were trying to overcome. What our consultant is still today working on, the application is due to FEMA June 1st, so they're closing in on finishing it. But what we need to balance is FEMA has made it clear that we have to include the entire cost of the bridge. And so we're really narrowing down the scope, and it gets pretty technical as to how to do that. So the entire bridge and the detour bridge have to be included. And right now, we're estimating that's about two and a half million for construction cost and the engineering that we've already done. So that's the portion that would be eligible for the ninety percent. The rest of it would fall into the eighty-twenty category.
Okay.
And the way all of the funding works for these programs through DOT is it's a reimbursement program, speaking to Nancy's point. So in the design phase, we pay our consultant a bill each month. We submit that bill to the state, and the state gives us our eighty percent back, which is why we have to ask for the full amount, because it's a reimbursement program, it's not a grant program. Once we get to the construction phase, when, once we've done the bids and we get the bids approved by DOT and the contractor gets the notice to proceed, DOT sends us a check for fifty percent of the construction cost. And the finance folks just keep that money, and we pay off of that. And then, as we submit invoices and we get to that fifty percent mark on the project, then they reimburse us monthly for the remainder of the project.
Up till eighty percent?
Up to the eighty percent, correct.
And as, at least on this portion that we're withdrawing from the capital reserve, as we submit that and we get a refund, it goes back into the capital reserve?
Yes, basically, not to complicate things, it's all accounting what the pluses and minuses. The state, we have to gross appropriate. So that's why we have to take the 700-plus thousand dollars and say, "We approved the expenditure of the 700,000. We can't net it out and say only 398."
Right.
So what comes on is that we make the payments out of, we have one big checkbook for the town. So we make the payments out of that checkbook using eighty-nine-ten. And then, when we get the deposits back for the eighty percent, it goes against that account, eighty-nine-ten. So really, what we're doing is, we're asking the trustee of trust funds for that net amount of money of the twenty percent at the end of the year.
So when the books are all closed, the capital reserve fund will only be decremented 190,000?
Yeah, 190,000 dollars. That's all we're taking, that's all we're taking out of that capital reserve.
Yep.
So we do have to request authorized withdrawal, however, of 650,000 from the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund?
Correct.
So I'd like a motion in that respect?
So moved. To appropriate and expend 650,000.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
You said it.
And do you have to, and do you have to have, and give you the authority to sign anything? Is that part of it?
And to give the town manager approval, or authority to sign any all necessary documents?
It takes a village.
Second.
So, motion made by Andy.
I have a question?
Oh, absolutely, Barbara. I'm sorry, I should've asked before. Go right ahead.
So how much of land do you fund now?
About 1.2 million dollars.
Okay. And when you were talking about land acquisition, what exactly does that mean?
So, thank you, good question, Barbara. So on many of our breach projects, we end up acquiring easements on properties, because easements owned to the center of the brook, or they're older roads, like US-3, where the right-of-way wasn't spelled out by deed back when it was created as a, you know, an old post road, frankly. So the landowners may own to the center of the road, in fact, but we have a right-of-way easement. So outside of that right-of-way easement, particularly where we're widening the bridge, lengthening the bridge, and putting in retaining walls for the bridge abutments, we need to acquire easements, usually four easements, one on each corner of the bridge. And that'll be true on this project as well. In addition, we're probably gonna need a significant easement, temporary easement for the detour bridge, which is proposed to run on the east side of Daniel Webster Highway, carrying two lanes of traffic. So that's where the right-of-way acquisitions occur. I expect that there'll be easements rather than outright property takings in this case. So I don't anticipate any takings, per se. They would just be easements. And this is a process we've done for each of the previous projects. And typically, the way that process goes, and it'll be up for the town council to decide, but what's happened in the past is, once we get to the point where the preliminary design is completed and we have, we know what the project's gonna look like, and we know what the right-of-way, what right-of-way is needed to accomplish the project, then we'll have a non-public meeting, because it's about property and real estate with the town council, and the town council may authorize me to negotiate on behalf of them within certain guidelines based on values provided by an appraiser. So that's kind of the quick and dirty how the process happens. It's a, being in the federal program, we have to really follow a detailed process for this to make sure the homeowners get fair market value. That's a really important aspect of this. And that'll be based on appraiser values for the land, and for the use, the town will get over it. And obviously, a permanent easement would be worth more to the homeowner, costs more to the town than a temporary easement would. But each has value, certainly.
And for us geographically challenged northeast, west, and south, when Kyle's talking about the easily portion of the road, he's talking about the MYA portion of the road?
Riverside.
Riverside, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And one last question? You were mentioning, Paul, about money coming from one of the trust funds, which was?
That's the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund.
It's not the trust fund?
It's not a trust fund, it's a capital reserve fund, but the trustee of trust funds...
Okay, I thought you said trust fund, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I apologize, Barbara. Well, for not asking you first, you had to speak up for yourself, which I'm glad you did. So I'll try to be better. Okay.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I hate to interrupt, but we were asked, I was just reminded one more time, by our minute taker, sometimes we get a little funky on some of our motions, and it makes it a little difficult for her. So the first couple that we did, we kind of were right there and to the point. This one, if we could just restate what the motion was, because we started one, we changed it to add, expend and appropriate and expend, and then add me, too. So if we could just restate that for the minute taker, that'd be great.
Do you want to do that, Andy?
So, I move to approve the withdrawal...
Approve and expend?
I move to appropriate and expend from the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund 950,000 for the consideration of combining the Wire Road intersection project with US-3 bridge project. And to authorize the town manager to sign any and all necessary documentation.
Well done. That's, and still second?
Second.
Okay, so, motion.
Did you want 950 or 650?
It's 650, not 950.
Oh, I'm sorry, if I said 950, I meant 650. Good catch, thank you.
Well said, okay, motion made by Andy Hunter in the Village and Nancy Murphy. Now we have to do a roll call vote. Nancy?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Nancy, yes, 400.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we're going to deal with the now new number-three item. US Route 3 Ova-Babusik Bridge Project Letter of Support. And I will not read it all through, but just to let the public know, we're going to decide this, but there's also been a draft letter submitted if we choose to go for the letter of report. And if we do that, we'll read the letter out loud. So go ahead, Kyle.
Basically, sorry. Basically, what we're asking the council for is a letter of support of the project. We just voted on it, saying yes, we're gonna expend the money. It goes kind of a longer way. I know we got a letter of support from the Town Center Committee, I wrote a letter of support, I think we got one other letter of support. The more letter of supports that we can send up for this amendment to show that the town council backs this program and moving these, combining these two projects into one and moving them forward in their 10-year plan, the better we are. Basically, the letter of support says that, that the town council supports these projects, which it did by giving us the funding to go ahead and start the design work on that. Did I miss anything, Kyle?
Just specifically the purpose of this, as I mentioned, there's federal funds involved in this project. And anytime there's federal funds, you have to follow the rules of the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA for short. And one of the real important steps before we can move from preliminary design on a project where we currently are to final design is getting approval on that NEPA document. And what that is, it's kind of an overview of all of the environmental concerns on a project. For example, if there were any federal funds used on the park, meaning MYA, you have to say that there's gonna be no detriment to the park. We've actually already done that part. But the wetlands permit, shorelands permits, all of those different historical stuff, all of that stuff gets considered in the NEPA document. And one of the big parts of it is stakeholder engagement. And so our consultant, who sent the letter to the town council and to town manager McCallie, is requesting to many stakeholders, planning board members, town council, town center committee, and a bunch of other school district, soliciting comments for the project, concerns, support, anything that someone thinks is important for the federal government to know about the project. This is a good chance to express those concerns or thoughts or support. So that's really the basis of the request. And I guess I'll leave it at that.
I guess we, I don't know, we need a motion. Do we need a motion to do this point, and then we'll do the letter separately? The actual approval of the letter?
You could do all in one, you could, because the letter was drafted in the packet, you can move the letter, or you can read the letter and then move it.
I think that's what I'll do. So I'm gonna read this letter, and there's a little typo there, I'll tell you. Did you see it, construction? Under the second page, I'll highlight it. Just quickly read it, it's not too long. It's to the senior project committee engineer for Quantum Construction Consultants regarding the Merrimack US Route 3 Ova-Babusik Brook National Environmental Policy Agency outreach. Dear Mr. Rainey, Merrimack Town Council wishes to express our support for the US-3 Ova-Babusik Bridge Road Replacement Project. The project accomplishes a number of goals for the town of Merrimack in the areas of safety, non-motorized traffic access, and flood mitigation. The US-3 bridge is a redless bridge by the New Hampshire DOT. First and foremost, the replacement of the existing structure that was built in 1933 will ensure that motorists will have a safe corridor to travel while moving along the town's primary north-south route. US-3 is the highest-traffic-volume local road in the town of Merrimack, carrying more than 16,000 vehicles per day. The existing bridge does not allow for proper guardrail installation, which is what you mentioned before, Kyle, increasing the safety for vehicles. The replacement bridge is proposed to include sidewalks on both sides of the bridge, creating safe, non-motorized traffic passage where virtually none exists today. The sidewalks are a key part of the town's pedestrian and trail master plan that was developed by the Merrimack Town Center Committee in 2009 and endorsed by the town council. The town has projects in our capital improvement program... The town has projects in our capital improvement program to extend the newly created sidewalks on the bridge to connecting sidewalks along the corridor. The next sentence is where it has, you saw it, okay. The US Three Bridge is the final construction of the Babusik-
Construction is correct.
It is construction.
Yep.
Ah, see, okay. It's the final constriction. You know why I thought that was weird, yeah, okay. Of the Babusik Bridge Brook before it reaches the Sauhegan River. The town has previously replaced five bridges upstream of this bridge, bringing the Brook back to its natural channel width. Replacement of this structure, structure will complete the goal of reducing restrictions to the Brook, to lead to increased flooding, including over the FE Everett, FE Everett Turnpike during the predicted one-hundred-year storm event. Thank you for reaching out to the Merrimack Town Council for our input on this valuable project. We look forward to its completion. So I guess what we're looking for is a motion to approve sending the support letter?
Right.
So moved. And the motion is made by Barbara. Any questions, first of all?
No, I'm good, thank you. Second.
Okay, motion made by Nancy Barfy, second by Barbara Healy. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Okay, Nancy?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Nancy, yes, four zero zero. Well, that's why I said that- So you looked at, okay, I wasn't the only one, thank you. Okay, Kyle's still here, too, for the next one. Consideration of accelerating the Sauhegan River Trail Project to federal fiscal year twenty-two, request to withdraw from Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund. The final, the Sauhegan River Trail Project is nearing the final design stage. Permitting requirements for the project have increased the anticipated construction cost of the project, resulting in a gap in funding available to the project in fiscal year twenty-three. Accelerating the design of the project to fiscal year twenty-two will allow the New Hampshire DOT to cover the state portion of the cost increase. Boy, we're doing a lot of, tonight with the state, aren't we? The town council will be asked to consider a withdrawal from the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund to cover the town portion, portion of the cost increase. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Town Center Committee Chair Nelson Disco is gonna be very happy that this project is moving forward. And it's been a long time. I wanna say that I think we started this project back in thirteen-ish?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, two thousand fifteen.
It just felt like thirteen.
Yeah, it just felt like thirteen, fifteen, and it, we, we thought we were gonna do it, got delayed. We thought we were gonna get construction, got delayed. So for them to say, hey, we got a gap in funding, you guys are so close to finalized design, we, are you able to get this project started? Kyle came up to me, and I think we both were jumping for joy at that time, to say, yes, let's get this project started, it's, it's been a long road, and I'll let him take it away with his presentation.
And the money is very similar to the previous one.
Right.
It is.
And, and once again-
Not in terms of amount, but the mechanism.
Right. And, and once again, we've been planning for this, we've had the money set aside for this, there's plenty of money in the capital reserve fund to do both of these projects and move them forward. And that's, that's one of the things that, by funding the capital reserves the way we fund our capital reserves, it gives us more flexibility when things like this do occur, that we can say, yep, we have the money, let's go. Because in our plan, we're looking at it, and we're funding for that, for, for these projects and other things in the town.
Thank you, Paul.
Take it away, Kyle.
As with the bridge project and wire road project, this project has been around for a while. So I'm gonna give a fairly comprehensive presentation on it. There's, there's a lot of new people in town, and some new counselors who certainly haven't heard all of my spiel on this project, so.
And you're gonna take full advantage of it.
I may well. Plus Nelson loves to hear about it, so. We had Town Center Committee last Friday, and I knew some of these details, but I wouldn't share them with them, 'cause I wanted to give them to you first, so. He'll, he's been eagerly awaiting this presentation. So the, the Sauhegan River Pedestrian Trail is a, really quickly off the top, is a trail that connects Watson Park through, under the, the Chamberlain Bridge, which is the granite bridge that Daniel Webster Highway US Three runs on by the fire station, runs under that bridge, through an old sluiceway, across the, what's now a wet meadow, but was formerly a water emboundment before the dam was removed, and then over to connect into a trail system that's existing in the woods on the other side of that meadow area. The project started in, really in two thousand fourteen. DOT announced, it was the first round of TAP applications, Transportation Alternatives Program, which was formerly the TE Program, which is Transportation Enhancement Program. The feds re, re, changed the program a little bit, gave it a new name, and this was the first round of TAP funding from the federal government. We were successful in getting the River Trail Project accepted through the program in two thousand fourteen, and began with design. It was originally designed as a multi-use path, which was gonna be between eight and ten feet wide, due to what quickly became evident of a, a more expensive project than we anticipated, and also ADA requirements for a multi-use path, we re-designated it as a pedestrian trail, to, to help save money on the project, and, and it, while, while still maintaining the integrity of the project. The project repurposed, repurposes the extant historical remnants of the, of the Merrimack Village Dam, which is a really important aspect. The, the biggest, biggest piece of time involvement in this project has been the historical approval, because of the old sluiceway, and, and, and the structures on the Watson Park side that exist. And getting Department of Historical Resources approval to, to move forward was a challenge. They liked that we were reusing the, the elements, and that we're not gonna demolish any elements, we're gonna bury some, which they're actually happy with. So we'll get more into that in, in a bit. We completed the engineering study way back in March of two thousand eighteen, and at that point, we found out that the project cost a lot more than we thought it was going to. And in the meantime, we had been awarded a not, a second TAP grant for the, from the two thousand sixteen round. They come out every two years. And that was gonna be for sidewalks on Woodbury Street, and along Daniel Webster Highway and, and Babusik Lake Road. We, we got permission from the state to combine the two, the amounts from the two TAP grants into the one Sauhegan River Trail Project, which is largely why we ended up self-funding Woodbury Street last year. We filed the original wetland application for the project back in February of two thousand And, and recently, discussions with DES, they requested a portion of, the portion of the trail that crosses the wet meadow to be a boardwalk, rather than the, what was, what we had proposed was kind of a, a causeway kind of design with a, a culvert pipe that would allow water from the stream to go through. DES was fairly adamantly opposed to that idea, and they suggested it needed to be either a at-grade or elevated boardwalk. The problem with the at-grade boardwalk is duration, so we have competing agencies on this project. We're funded from federal funds, federal highway funds, which means the project has to have a design life of fifty to seventy-five years. And a boardwalk, you know, just boards across the meadow will not meet that goal. So of the two choices DES gave us, really, we only had one choice, was the elevated boardwalk. We've had extensive historical studies, as I mentioned, we finally made it through that hurdle a number of months ago. Preliminary design was completed in March of this year. We just received our NEPA approval, that's that important document that we've just been talking about. And the proposed advertisement schedule, if we go forward with what we're discussing tonight, would be September of two thousand twenty-two, which is not too far away. And we'll, we'll get back to the, the, the numbers in this for a bit, but the reason that that's important, and, and why DOT is pushing it, is much like our project, which started in two thousand fourteen, and is still going eight years later, other communities are running against the same challenge as we are, getting through the permitting process. And, and so they're not expending their funds. So DOT has funds that they don't have, or that they have committed to other projects, but they know those other projects aren't going to go to construction. So ours being the closest, they're gonna allow us to, again, bridge the gap of funding by moving it up. And that's really the crux of, of what we're gonna talk about tonight. So here's the River Trail. I don't know, can you see my pointer?
Yeah.
So in Watson Park, we have a sidewalk that we built under the TE Program, when we did this little piece of sidewalk, and we did the sidewalks in front of Buckley's up to the lobster boat. So that, that was all built under a federal program as well. It's going to come down in Watson Park. This is that existing brown fence, we're gonna come through that fence area, there's gonna be a new fence, keeping the, the unsafe area separate from, from where people can walk, but it's gonna clean up this whole area, which is a mess now. So that's gonna be a really nice addition to the park. So trail's gonna come under here, and then here's the Chamberlain Bridge that I talked about. And this is a partial granite arch bridge, granite block arch, and masonry arch bridge. There was an extension done on the east side, which is the Merrimack Riverside. But there's actually two arches under this bridge. There's the main arch that carries the Sauhegan River, then there's a secondary arch that carries water from the old Merrimack, Merrimack Village Dam Power District. And it, it, there's a sluiceway through here, comes under here, and it heads north here, and then off into the factories that were there when it was a tannery and, and other uses many years ago. So that, the trail's gonna go under the arch, through a head gate here. It's, it's actually kinda neat, it's gonna look great when it's done. The actual existing head gates that allowed the water to flow or not flow are still there. And we're gonna preserve, there's one wooden one left, we're gonna preserve that, and so people will be able to see it forever, which is really kinda cool, 'cause you can't see it now, 'cause it's buried under, under weeds and, next to the fire station property. So you're gonna continue there, and then across that wet meadow portion. So this is where the boardwalk is gonna be, and we'll talk more about that in some slides as well.
Nancy, do you have a question?
Thank you, Kyle. Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Where, as you have the, the proposed trail coming down, just before it goes under the bridge area?
Yep.
I mean, I know we have some fencing and stuff right there, don't we, to keep, how is that gonna be impacted for like, access to the-
It's gonna move it.
Water from?
There still won't be access to the river. Over in this area, there's a, there's a retaining wall along the river.
Yep.
And there's a lot of old basement holes, and, and some really nasty terrain out there. So we wanna keep that separate, fenced off from the public. So the fence line that, that currently runs here-
Yep.
Is gonna still come up to here, and then it's gonna be relocated down to here, to prevent people from getting into those unsafe areas.
Thank you.
Yep. And then one, there's two other components of the project, and, and really what, what started it in two thousand fourteen. Anyone who's walked along Daniel Webster down here has seen the steel traffic plates that we have on the sidewalk. This sidewalk, interestingly, is a cantilever sidewalk. There's, there's beams coming out in this direction from the, from the retaining wall that's holding up Daniel Webster Highway, and we have holes in the concrete, 'cause they're quite old. And so as part of this project, and really what started it, was we had money set aside in the CIP and the budget to fix these sidewalks. And we had planned to use the, the funding for this to act as the twenty percent match for the River Trail Project. So keep that in mind as we get further in the presentation, 'cause that's still true. Additionally, this bridge was put on the red list just a few years ago, and one of the key reasons is, there's a beam right here that holds up the fascia of the, the granite facing of the bridge. This side of the bridge is where the concrete arch is, but the facing of the bridge is still granite stone. And there's a really important beam here that's holding that up, and, and that's spalling, and you can see rebar on it. That's also gonna be repaired as part of this project. So in addition to the, the River Trail, we're also getting some needed infrastructure repairs as part of the project. It may, once we do the work, the DOT Bridge Inspectors will, will come and do their yearly inspection, and it may in fact be enough, hopefully. So here's a, a scale drawing of, of the same plan, again, starting in Watson Park, coming down through, through the sluiceway, breaking through the, the pens here, which, which again, these pens are gonna be filled with dirt, which is how we're gonna repair this sidewalk, and, and I think I have a detail in the presentation about that. But now the sidewalk is gonna be on soil, rather than being held up by these existing beams. It's gonna come through, under the bridge, through the sluiceway. Here's where it comes through the head gates, that really cool feature. It's still, in fact, you can still see the wheel that turn the head gates open, it's really cool. One other part that's gonna be located somewhere in here is, as part of the historical requirements, we have some panels, some information panels, that, that are gonna kinda talk about the project and what used to be there.
Okay.
And they're, they're really fantastic. I, I can't wait for people to, to see them. They're, they're just full of information, full of colorful pictures. It, it's really a great representation of Merrimack's past. So then we're gonna continue on, there's a retaining wall here to, to help the fire station from, from being impacted. Then it's gonna continue around, and then again, this final piece is the boardwalk, and then eventually tying into the wooded area where existing trails exist. The beauty of this project is, these existing trails connect up to, past the high school, up in this direction, and eventually up to the Merrill's Marauders Bridge, which has the pedestrian bridge, unfortunately, which is closed right now, but will eventually be repaired. And that really makes the connection, you heard Bob Bass talk about the, the town being broken north-south, or into east-west components by the turnpike. It's also broken north-south by the Sauhegan River. And this trail with that bridge, once that gets repaired, really connects all four quadrants of, of Merrimack that are split by the turnpike and the Sauhegan River to points west. And that, that's really the, the spirit of this project, is the, the connectivity of residential areas west to the business district, to the schools, to the town center. And that, that's really the beauty of the project. So here's just a closer picture of where we're starting. Here, here's that fence that we're gonna bust through and, and relocate to, to clean this area up. Here's a picture of what I was talking about with the sidewalk. So here's the existing sidewalk, there's beams that, that cross this area, and that's what's holding the sidewalk up now. We're gonna fill this whole area in with soils, so the new sidewalk will be just a paved sidewalk on soil like, like any normal sidewalk. Here's a picture of what the boardwalk may look like. We're still in the design process, but we think it'll be, look something like this. It'll be founded on helical- It'll be founded on helical piles. So think like an auger. They auger these piles in and they just leave them there. So rather than digging and pouring concrete, they can just drive these piles in with equipment. There's minimal upset to the wetland and then they just build on top of that. And right now it looks like it may be a precast concrete structure, which will certainly give us a really long service life that'll serve us well. And here's one that's down in, I think is North Carolina, of similar design as to what we're looking at. And you can see, it just looks gorgeous. It'd be just a tremendous bonus for the town. And really, it's us showing the state this picture was really what got them on board to continue funding it because the state looks at things on a unit basis. And per foot, this project is really expensive. And the sales pitch that I gave them was, this is going to be a real, an unbelievable representation of what the TAP program can give to communities. And I think that helped sway them a little bit. So I'm really excited about it. And this is a view from the Chamberlain Bridge, looking over to that wet meadow area. So this is where, if you're standing on the Chamberlain Bridge, you could look and just see the boardwalk. Really, really nice view with the river in front and it'll be a spectacular thing for the town. So project costs, as I mentioned, there's different components to it. The trail itself is about $515,000. The existing sidewalk and bridge repairs, that's about $264,000. And then the boardwalk is almost half a million. And so for a total construction cost of about 1.2 million is what we're expecting. What was previously programmed was about 1.2 million. So we've got that half a million dollar delta primarily because of the boardwalk cost. And that's what we need to have additional funding for. And this is where, by moving it up to fiscal year '22, and when I say that, it's federal fiscal year, which runs from October 1st to September 30, unlike our fiscal year. Theirs is a little later. So by moving it up to fiscal '22, the state has the 80% money in the program to cover the addition of that $567,000.
So the actual project total though was 1,760?
One, yeah, that's our estimate as of today.
63.
Is 1.763 million. Yep. And that's for everything. That's the design we've already done, the construction engineering that is to be done and the construction of the project. Previous approvals of funding, so back when we got the grant for the River Trail in 2004, it was officially awarded in '15. In the fiscal '17 budget, which would be 2016, '17, the voters in the town council approved $586,000. In the next year fiscal '18 was an amount approved just for design for the Babuukak Woodbury sidewalks of 105,000. And the town council had approved to merge that funding into the River Trail. So taking those previously approved amounts and the total of 1.763 that we need leads me to the request for the town council to expend up to 1.072 million from the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund.
And just like the other one that I had a heart attack on, in consultation with Paul, again, it's an accounting issue. In reality, the bottom line is going to be, the project is 1,763,000 dollars with an 80% state match.
Correct.
The state will pay 1,410,400 dollars and the town will pay, bottom line, from the Capital Reserve Fund, 352,600 dollars.
And I'm really glad you did that math for me because going back to this slide, the repairs that we need to make on our existing infrastructure to the bridge and the sidewalk, 264,000. So the bulk of that 300 and change that you just spoke of
352,000, yeah.
Is money we need to spend anyway.
Anyway.
Even if we didn't do the River Trail project, we need to spend that money anyway, so.
Okay. So the motion having to do with approve, approve and expend, right?
Appropriate.
Oh, it's just appropriate. See, I had it written down and you changed it on me. So even though the motion will be to appropriate 1,72,000, 72,000, we have to remember in the end, we're going to be actually paying 352,600,000, right? Barbara, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. So how much would it be if it was just the bridge and not the sidewalk and/or the causeway or any of that? Because we have to fix the bridge. So what's the difference in that cost? Because we still have, we're using money from the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund and we still have roads, even though I think I heard Paul or you just say that there was, you know, all of the paving was done for the year. But we still have some roads that are in really tough shape. So I'm listening and I'm reading today about this project and parts of this are nice to have. I'm not, I mean, I've been down that way. It's a beautiful area. I'm sure putting a causeway through and connecting it over to Watson would be lovely. But if I have to put it on a scale of one to 10, with one being the highest priority, the bridge is, not the causeway or the road or, I mean, the walkway underneath.
All right. I'll try to answer that question. The, yes, we do have some roads in town that are in rough shape. The Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund would be used for drainage, sidewalks, bridges and major road reconstruction. It wouldn't be just to be putting an overlay on a road. For instance, we wouldn't use the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund just to pave Babuukak Lake Road. We'd use it if we were reconstructing Babuukak Lake Road in a way that we'd have to reconstruct like we did with Tinker Road, when we reconstructed Tinker Road. For those that remember way back when, we used the Road Infrastructure to reconstruct Tinker Road. So that's the difference with this money. To answer part B of your question of how much would be to fix Chamberlain Bridge alone, we don't have it broken out. We have the sidewalks and the bridge repair, that beam that Kyle was talking about of being about estimated at $264,000 out of a total of the 358. So really all we're taking additional out of the Capital Reserve Funds is about $98,000. What? Eighty-eight, sorry, $88,000, that's late. $88,000 out of the Capital Reserve Fund for that additional portion of having the sluice way and the trail built.
So if you, because you're using the same Capital Reserve Fund for your other project with White Road and the bridge over there, correct?
Correct.
So if you add this project in to that pot as well, if this is approved, how much is left in that pot?
Kyle, could you, how much was there? Six, what was the total prior already approved?
On this project?
Yeah.
691.
691. Yeah, thank you Nancy.
20% of 700 is 140. You can tell I did my homework.
How much, there would be enough, because we've been planning for this project since 2014, there is enough money in that Capital Reserve to pay for both of these projects.
Okay. And next year for the budget cycle, are you going to come at us and say, oh, because we had these three big projects, now we need to have a major dump of money back into that fund?
No, I right now have not, we are not planning on asking for additional money to be put into that Capital Reserve. I don't have my budget book in front of me. I don't know how much we put in there, but I believe it was, it was significant amount of money and we basically flatlined that money for the last couple of years and we would continue to flatline that money in that account.
But I guess
What does that mean?
It means that I wouldn't ask for additional funding, that we have it over what we already been funding it for. Because we have other drainage projects that we need to do that comes out of this account as well.
Okay, the only thing, maybe I need clarification Barbara too. In reality, the 1,72 is a bookkeeping issue. This is how I separate it. The actual money that we're going to be taking out of the Capital Reserve is 352,000, not 1,72.
Oh, I know.
Okay, all right.
But still, I mean, if I have, again, if I was prioritizing projects that had to get done,
Yeah.
I have serious concerns about that this will be seen as a frivolous project by many. And I see it that way. So, you know, fix the bridge, but the rest of it, I'm not so sure about. So I'm thinking about it.
Okay, let me ask Kyle a question. Let's say just for a discussion, we only did the bridge. We don't have approval by the state just to do the bridge alone, do we, or do we?
No, we don't.
So I mean, let's say theoretically, we decided we did not, wanted to keep it fundamental just to the bridge and we were looking for 80% state support. We'd have to start from square one to do that?
We would, yeah. And that's something we, that Dawn and I are going to be doing soon. You heard in the legislative update that there's additional bridge funding coming. DOT expects to open up a new round of project solicitation. And the last of our bridges to be worked on is the Chamberlain Bridge. And we anticipate coming to the town council with a request to get an estimate for that project.
For the remainder of the correction or, because you already said?
Yeah, for the remainder. There's still a lot of work. There's spalling concrete.
Got you.
The joints need to be repointed. Now this would not be a replacement project. This would be a rehabilitation, which would be much cheaper, but it would still be eligible for that 80-20 funding if we go through the program. If we do it ourselves, we have to fund it at 100%. And I would just add, just to, just for clarification, the paving program that Paul spoke of being complete, that's funded out of the road infra, I'm sorry, the infrastructure account, 8505 account in the highway budget. It is not funded out of Capital Reserve Funds. That's the money the town council sets aside every year for paving and paving related work. So it's always been completely separate from the Capital Reserve Fund projects, which are in the CIP.
I mean, I guess for me, you know, we're looking at a total of just under 1.8 million for this entire project. We need to spend for repairs, you know, and our portion of that is 300. Are we willing to spend the $350,000 to get this 1.8 million dollar project in our town? And of the 350,000 that we're looking to spend, we're committed to 264 of it for repairs anyways. And so really what it comes down to for me is, are you willing to spend an extra $88,000 to get a 1.8 million dollar project in our town?
And only because I asked the question, because I like to have answers, but the design of the project to date has been 80-20 funding and we've been reimbursed that 80%. I did ask, because this is a big ask for the town, no question. It's an expensive project. I did ask DOT, what happens if the town council decides not to go forward with the project? What happens with the money that's already been reimbursed? And, you know, while they didn't give me a crystal clear answer, because it hasn't happened, there is a possibility that the state would require, the state and the feds would require the 80% reimbursement that's happened to date to go back. I don't say that as a threat because it's only a possibility. Would they actually do that? I doubt it, but it is a possibility and, you know, to be upfront, I just thought I ought to share that.
Okay, any other questions? Nancy, anything? Barbara, anything more?
No, thank you.
Andy? Okay. So we need to, or does someone want to make a motion to appropriate 1,72,000, $72,000 from the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund?
So I move to appropriate 1,72,000 from the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund for the Sauhegan River Trail Project. And to authorize the town manager to sign all necessary documents.
Okay, the motion made by Andy Hunter, submitted by Nancy Murphy?
Just one friendly amendment, appropriate and expend.
Oh, I move to appropriate and expend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Almost, one of these days I'll get that right. Okay, are we ready? Okay. So voting, we'll call, vote Nancy? Yes. Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
No.
Nancy, yes. Okay. So the answer is no?
No, 3-1, yes.
I'm sorry. Oh, 3.
3-1, Barbara Healy voting in the negative. It passes.
But we have, oh, it has enough. Okay, I'm thinking to myself, okay. So 3, yes, 1, no, Barbara Healy, no. And that's it.
It passes.
And it passes. Okay. I'm thinking, I'm still thinking of the whole quorum thing. We don't need that, okay. I thought we needed the 4 out of the 7. Okay. Thank you. Kyle did too, see? Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Kyle. Okay, next on the agenda, the Fire Equipment Capital Reserve Withdrawal Request, submitted by Fire Chief Mark DeFranzo. The town council to consider Merrimack Fire Rescue's request to withdraw and expand $108,975 from the Fire Equipment Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of replacement of the breathing air compressor system. Now I do remember hearing a whole, and when was it that we got the cylinders? We got that through a grant, didn't we?
Yes, we got them about maybe three, three or four years ago. It was probably around 18, 19 that we received the grant money.
Which we got, we replaced all the cylinders. And I remember at that time saying the compressor is going to be down the road and this is the road.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. You're right. And I don't know if you recall, but back when Chief Duke was the fire chief, we came before the council, when we were looking at apparatus and other things, to come up with a capital improvement plan for the fire department. And this item was placed on the capital improvement plan for the fire department, knowing full well that when we did get the grant, all they were going to be replacing was our mask and our tanks, our breathing apparatus for our firefighters. We always knew that we had some life left in our, what I call the refueling tank or the, you know, fueling, refilling tanks of our own. Since that time, it's been a little bit long in the tooth and it's started to give us some significant trouble. We had it actually scheduled to be replaced this year anyways. So this was the year in that budget when we budgeted it to be replaced. I'll let Chief DeFranzo talk to you more because he can give you more details about what actually this compressor system is and how the fire department utilizes it.
Thank you, town manager. So thank you for having me tonight. Yeah, so the department did receive a grant to replace our SCBAs, those are the self-contained breathing apparatus, which is the entire ensemble. So it's an air pack along with an air cylinder. So, it's an air pack along with an air cylinder, and a lot of the people in the general public think we use oxygen cylinders, it's not an oxygen cylinder, oxygen tank, it's a compressed air tank that we breathe to enter hazardous environments. So, these are the systems that were bought, um, and as you, like you said, it's a cylinder that we need to refill after we use it. Our current system is a two-module type system. It happened to fail within the last month. Uh, we looked into getting it repaired, it's gonna be a few thousand dollars to get it repaired. We had an opportunity to maybe get a repair for a few hundred dollars, but because the fourth stage is in such poor condition, they couldn't do it on a few hundred dollars, so it would take us a few thousand dollars to repair it. Since it was already on the list to be replaced, and it should have been replaced back in the fall, but it kinda got put, put aside due to other things, um, we're here today to try to replace it. So, it's at least 25 years old, from what I can gather in, from information that I've got from the staff. Um, like I said, it was originally due to be replaced in the fall, and the unit's failed, and it's, and it's, you know, really not repairable, within a reasonable cost. So, we're looking to purchase a new unit. Um, we're already seeking requests for proposals. Um, if you vote no, we didn't lose anything, other than, you know, if we do get approval from you tonight, we will have saved some time, so we can get this project moving sooner. Uh, different vendors may have different delivery times, we could be looking at 6 to 8 weeks before we see the unit, so we're, we're gonna be out without a compressor for a while. Um, this new system would be a single-unit system versus what you saw in the original one that we have, is a two-unit system, um, but this is comparable to the current system that we have now. It's still a 6,000 PSI compressor, it's a 10 horsepower electric motor, this one has the NFPA compliant three-position fill station, we have a three-position fill station now, this one has gas monitoring, which allows the system to look for contaminants within the air that it's using to fill the compressed air bottles that we use, uh, which is what we have now. Uh, remote fill connection, the only thing we're adding to this one is a 100-foot hose reel. Right now, we have to plug a hose in and stretch it across the station, um, and then coil that hose back up. Um, the other addition that we're doing to this is an RFID reader system, so what that allows us to do, um, each cylinder will have its own little barcode, so we'll know every single time that that cylinder was filled, the date it was filled, and the person who was operating the machine, which is a new requirement through NFPA to kinda track who's filling cylinders and when. So, should there be a contamination and a firefighter become ill, we can go back to the date that those cylinders were filled, and try to ascertain what the problem was. So, here's just a close-up view of the system that we'd like to purchase. Again, we've gone out to RFPs, it may not be this particular kind, or this particular brand, but this is a similar unit that we would be getting. This is without the fancy case on it, so this is, you know, what it looks like inside, and then that's the rear of the unit. So, the quotes that we received to even start looking at this, uh, the compressor system was about 107,000 dollars. The original project line for this was about 94,000, so it is more money, but that was a couple of years ago. And as we all know, um, the supply chain issues, COVID issues, inflation issues, we've just got a host of reasons why costs are just astronomically going through the roof. So, that's why the, the project came in a little higher. Um, the other thing we noticed is when we were measuring to see if the new system would fit in the current location, it really won't. So, we have to move it to the opposite side of the bay that it's gonna be in, so that requires an electrical, uh, system work to be done for that, so that was a quote of 1,975. So, the total project cost is 108,975. Does anybody have any questions?
Andy?
With the supply chain the way it is, wha, what will we do to fill bottles?
So, currently what we have now is we have a compressed air type system on our rescue trucks, so we're able to fill cylinders now, a few at a time here and there, and when this, when the bottles on the rescue become empty, we can go to another community that has an air compressor, and they'll fill us up, whether it's Nashua, or Manchester, or whomever. They've been more than gracious to fill whatever we have. Uh, we did some additional research, Nashua has the ability that if we have a real major fire, we need to fill cylinders on-site, they can bring us 100 bottles immediately to start using at a major fire if we have to do that. So, we do have some, uh, contingency plans in place, should we need to have that, but, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful we can get something done.
And then, do we have any plans for the old unit?
The old unit is not worth anything, we've already investigated that with the vendors that may be successful with this, and it's pretty much just gonna be the worth of the metal.
So, are we gonna auction it, scrap it?
Probably scrap it, because... We'll probably scrap it, bec, we might auction it off as a, a not-repairable system, or we can scrap it, all depends on, um, the age, like the chief said, and whether or not, uh, whether or not it, it's compliant with, uh, the codes. So, it's a, it's a decision that will be made when, uh, when we get it ready to get rid of it, whether it's just scrapped, or if we go to auction with it.
I mean, I don't know the condition of it, but I know they're fairly sought after for the scuba community.
Yeah, unfortunately, this one, because the fourth stage has failed, that's a pretty extensive cost to fix it.
Okay.
So, it may not be worth much of anything.
Nancy?
All right, thank you. I just have a question around the electrical part of it. How many bids do, uh, do you guys get customarily to...
We just went with the town's contractual bid that we have, which is Custom Electric here in town, so that's who we use.
We, we go out to bid every so many years for electric, electrical services, um, and Custom Electric is the low bidder. Uh, basically, they'll come in and price out a project, as long as it's below 5,000 dollars, we don't need to bid it. Anything above 5,000 dollars, we actually go out to bid. They give us, uh, ti, basically what we do is every couple of years, we go out for time and material. So, they'll say X number of dollars on, regulars, overtimes, Y number of dollars, materials plus 10% or 15% of their cost. So, those are the bids that we go out, and we've been doing electrical bid for about 5, 6 years now. So, we, we have a contractor in town that won the bid the last time through, so we're able to use them.
Barbara, any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Paul, you know, we have the George Carroll and the Shed Harris Trust Funds for fire, of course, it's a Reed's Ferry, but technically, we have 3 firehouses. So, would it be prudent, maybe, to so, to try to save some of the, of the, the budget, you know, to outright purchase this, to take maybe a third of those 2 funds to go to the repair, or the purchase of this new system? Because it's not like it doesn't get used for Reed's Ferry.
We, we, we could seek reimbursement from the Reed, uh, the Shed Harris Fund, uh, for it, we'd have to do, uh, some mathematics with a number of calls and things of that sort, but, uh, we could potentially, uh, receive some additional money from the Shed Harris Fund instead of taking all out of capital reserve.
Yeah, because, you know, the way it stands now, I mean, I've been on the council 4 years, and we've never used either of those funds, because the argument always is, well, it's only for, you know, the Reed's Ferry area, but yet, those trucks are taking calls up here all the time.
We can look in, we can look into it and, and talk to the trustee of trust funds at their next meeting, to see, um, how they feel, and what they need, uh, for, for, to make a, a payment out of those funds.
Okay, how would we do that? If the council were to approve, um, this request, would the motion have to, uh, include and seek any possible funds from the Shed?
Yes, sim, similar to, uh...
I'm trying to respond to your request, Barbara.
Yeah, what, what you'd do is you would say something like, um, um, approve, uh, appropriate, approve the request to appropriate and expend 108,975 dollars from the Fire Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, uh, with, uh, the fire department slash town manager to, uh, try to get reimbursement from the Shed Harris Fund, uh, of, of, from that, to reduce the amount of money, uh, taken out of the capital reserve fund. Something, something like that.
Does that sound reasonable, Barbara?
Sounds good to me. And don't forget, the George, the George Carroll Fund is also for fire protection, et cetera, in the Reed's Ferry area as well.
It's gonna be one or the other, they're not gonna give it to us from both.
Yep, okay.
Okay. Is that your motion, Barbara?
So moved.
Second. I was, and it's not, and it's not even that late. Okay, so the motion made by Barbara, you have it, it's pretty clear what you said.
What I said, I, I, don't ask me to repeat it.
No, but it's in the tape, so you'll be able to get it.
You didn't get it the first time, you're out of luck.
And second by Nancy Murphy, any further discussion? Saying none, Nancy, roll call?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Nancy, yes. A passes 4-0-0.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back, chief.
Thank you.
Okay.
He's hoping that he won't have to come back for a while now.
He's, he's getting very comfortable in that.
Yeah, it seems like every time I come here, I'm asking for money, so yeah, hopefully at some point I can come here and do something a little bit different, so...
And we've spent a lot of money tonight, you're absolutely right.
I know, I was thinking that earlier.
My God.
Put all the requests, and then...
Okay, last but not least, last on the new business agenda, consideration of changes to Chapter 111, Conservation Areas of the Marimac Town Code. This is first reading, uh, the town council to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter 111, Conservation Areas of the Marimac Pursuit to Charter Article Roman Numeral 5. And on board is Tim Tenhae.
Before Tim gets going...
Paul, go right ahead.
Sorry, excuse me, Tim. Before Tim really gets going on this, I just wanna let you know, and Justin knows, that this is a map of the town of Marimac, and those pink areas that you see on this map is all the parcels that were referenced in Chapter 111. So, it's a little small, we tried to blow it up.
Unfortunately, when you call up this one, you don't get the rest of 4 still, which is this whole Sherry area, so it's a little bit bigger.
How many, how many acres does the town, does the Conservation Commission, is that the right way to ask? Monitors, or whatever, managers?
I don't have it off the top of my head. I have it on a spreadsheet that I did, how many acres are you talking about?
Can you, oh, yeah, push the button, I get...
Tim, can you turn your mic?
Sorry about that, um, I didn't realize the chief had shut it off, so...
I, I wanna say it's like over 1,000 acres, though, does that...
So, all, you mean altogether, or just included in this chapter update?
No, altogether.
Uh, yeah, we're, we're over 2,000 acres at this point.
Okay, so, okay, so that's irrelevant, what's included in this?
Almost all of it.
Okay. Okay, so that's, that's, I just wanted to start out with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's nearly 1,000 with the Greater Woods Parcels at this point, or, or slightly over.
Okay.
And another 560 with Horse Hill, uh, another 80 with 80 Acres, another 80 with Fields Farm, and then smaller parcels make up the rest of it.
Okay, so we can, you comfortable saying at least 2,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so what I've got for you all tonight is a, is a couple of slides, uh, and, and then we have the actual wording, and I'm not sure if you actually wanna go through parts of the wording tonight, it is the first reading, you tell me how you wanna proceed.
Well, I've read it, I'm not sure if the other councillors, but we can talk about, after your presentation, we could talk about whatever concerns that might be.
Yeah, I, I wanna address, when we discuss the wording, some of the feedback that you gave us the last time we were here.
Okay.
As, as well as some of the, uh, some of the language that the town's attorney had some que, had some comments on, I should say, that you should be aware of to be transparent in this whole process.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, first reading, you can see that there, I'll skip to the first slide, so this is just a summary of what's in the current chapter, so it covers, uh, 6 parcels of land, and it has since 1995. Um, the same restrictions are on all 6 parcels, uh, there is a penalty, and, and, for, for a violation of one of these, if so prosecuted, uh, and that's co, that's in accordance with RSA 3139 Roman Numeral 3, basically, you could be fined up to 1,000 dollars, uh, for a violation. And, and the way it's written currently, um, that, uh, discretion, I, I guess would fall under a judge, because there is no, uh, there is no set fee, so it could be anywhere from 0 to 1,000 dollars. Restrictions include, you can't stay on the property from a half, an hour after sunset to a half an hour before sunrise, uh, no fires unless approved by the commission and fire warden, no glass, no throwing or leaving trash, carry out all your trash, no alcohol or unlawful drugs, no parking except where designated, no OHRVs, uh, except for, as defined by RSA 215A, colon, 1, except for fire, police, ambulance, or emergency, no domesticated animals unless on a leash, rein, or in a cage, uh, no discharge of an air-powered or spring-powered gun, uh, any type of bow or firearm, and no defacing of a building, equipment, tree, shrub, or flower. Uh, so, moving on to what we're proposing, we're talking about 64 parcels altogether versus the 6 parcels that are here, um, same base set of, I should say, restrictions on all 64 parcels, uh, but basically, there's 3 categories. There is the base set, which covers all the parcels, uh, and there are some restrictions, and we'll cover them in a moment, uh, but we've added language since our last discussion that allows the town council, or designee, 'cause I wasn't sure that the council wanted to be addressing this all the time, so you could, it allows for a designee to waive after receiving a recommendation from the Conservation Commission. So, um, that last piece was not something that came up in our last discussion, but that the commission added, uh, uh, basically, uh, to say that the commission would like the opportunity to weigh in, uh, if you're going to waive a restriction on a particular parcel or something like that, simply because if you were to allow, say, a fire, like someone to have a campfire or something like that, um, there may be areas where you don't wanna do that, and, and they'd like to be able to point that out. Or if you wanted to, uh, to allow an OHRV, uh, activity to happen on one of the parcels, there's probably wetlands involved, since most of our parcels have them, so there'd be areas we would say it would be acceptable and lawful based on DES rules and everything else, and there's probably areas that aren't. So, it's, it's seeking the recommendation, it doesn't mean you have to follow the recommendation, that, that language isn't in here, and, and hopefully you've had a chance to see that. Uh, there, there is a, uh, there is a next set of restricted areas for just 2 parcels, um, and basically, that puts the dawn-to-dusk restriction back in, but only for 2 parcels, where it's currently on all 6 that are involved, and in the long run, it would be 2 out of 64 parcels that have that restriction. And we're talking about Wildcat Falls and Riverside Park. And then, and then there is 13 parcels involved with what's known, what we're calling completely passive, that means no motorized of any kind, e-bike, or OHRV, snowmobile, or any of that, um, no discharge of a firearm, uh, and, and no taking of wildlife, uh, which is essentially no hunting. Uh, the language "taking" is done because it's defined by RSA, which includes hunting and trapping as well, uh, but it does not include fishing, so fishing would be allowed. Yeah, sure.
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to probably interrupt you now, rather than, the, and clarify. So, the dawn-to-dusk, uh, dusk restrictions, they're currently on 6 of the parcels?
Correct. Yeah.
Um, and it adds for 2 more, so it'll be a total of 8 of the 64?
No, it's going, going from 6 down to 2.
6 down to 2?
Yes.
And what's, what's the rationale for that, for...
Um, well, to be honest with, with you, we don't really have a problem with people being out there at night, we've had, we have had problems at Wildcat Falls, so that's the one we've kept. Riverside Park is behind a, a number of homes along the Sauhegan River, and we decided to, to leave it that way as well, because they're right behind people's homes, so they wouldn't be just disrupting people if they stayed that way. The other parcels, uh, some of them are in the northwest part of, of town, um, along the side of a road and stuff like that, never, not that I'm ever aware of, have we've ever had a concern or problem out there, so we decided if this, if it's not a problem, then, then, then we'll just take it back. Uh, so, because we have the town charter and the ability to update this rather quickly, not having to wait for a 1-year, a vote every year, if, if there was a problem area, you could add it back in within 2 months, right?
Thank you.
Yeah. So, uh, so that's a, a summary, so let me, um, kinda do a side-by-side comparison. So, you know, starting at the top, uh, you know, the, the dawn-to-dusk is in the current chapter, so you can't remain from a half an hour after sunset to a... to a half hour before sunrise. That's gone from the six parcels down to two, and in the proposed, it's two of sixty-four, like we just spoke about. And it can be waived. No fires unless approved by the commission and fire warden. Essentially, we're saying no fires, but it can be waived, and the town council or designee can do the waiver. We don't have the commission being in the approval cycle, but we're hoping that you'd seek that, well, you'd seek that recommendation anyways. So the commission's still involved. The no glass, we didn't include no glass in the proposed chapter because if it's left behind, it's considered trash anyways. And we already say you can't have trash. So we kind of grouped the glass with the trash, and you can see that in the language when we get to it. So, and if you take your glass out with you, then it's not trash, right? So. Alcohol or unlawful drugs, that stays the same. Parking except allowed in designated areas, that stays the same. No OHRVs except for fire, police, and ambulance, that's now changed in the fact that we've, you know, in the new one, we're also saying no OHRVs, but we are allowing e-bikes of class one, but not class two or class three. And we've added language that allows it to be waived, which is different than what we had before. No domesticated animals except on a leash, rein, or cage. We don't speak to animals in the new proposed language because we do have a dog chapter that covers how dogs are managed in our town, and typically, dogs are the only animals that become an issue here. We do allow horses on a number of our properties, and we want to maintain that ability for horseback riders to do that. And I'm not sure of other domesticated animals that people would take on the property, so. We have current language that says no discharge of air-powered, spring-powered, or any type of bow or firearm. We've done essentially the same, but in the current language, we were talking about when it's done for target shooting. So we've kind of changed a little bit from none at all to, for just when it's being done for target shooting. A no defacing of building, equipment, tree, shrub, flower, that's all there, but we did add rock. And we did add fauna, which is, you know, it's taking flowers and going a little bit further and including other non-animal, you know, plant life, basically. So. And then we put in a couple of things that aren't in the current chapter, so that's towards the bottom of the comparison. So we've said no camping or sleeping overnight, but that could be waived. And of course, that would only be on the properties that would allow overnight or being waived. And then no snowmobiles, class one e-bikes, target shooting, or taking of wildlife on thirteen particular parcels. And the majority of those thirteen parcels already have deed restrictions that don't allow those activities, but not all of them. So one of the largest parcels is the Wasserman Conservation Area, which is approximately eighty acres that sits next to Wasserman Park. That doesn't allow for any of that to happen. We, as the Conservation Commission, since the town bought those, bought Wasserman back in ninety-two, we've added three more parcels that are adjacent to it, that are butted, I should say. And because they're in the woods, and you don't know if you're on one parcel or another unless we put signs all over the place, we thought that the three abutting parcels should have the same restrictions as the major parcel where people would be most likely parking and being part of. So it looks, when you're in the woods, it looks like all one parcel, and now we're going to have the same restrictions across all those parcels. That was the logic there. So that's the end of what I have for PowerPoint and the general overview. I can put on the screen the new language. I've got it on a drive. I don't know if you'd prefer me to do it that way.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a couple more questions, just on the proposed changes. On the waiving of throwing or leaving trash, carry out all trash, under what conditions would that, something like that, be waived? Like, somebody to leave trash?
I personally would think we wouldn't do that.
Okay, so I'm just wondering why we have that as a?
Well, so it's because of the way the language is worded. It doesn't address each one of them individually. It just takes the whole body and says, all this can be waived, and it just happens to be in the body. So it wasn't, it wasn't, here I called it out separately, but in the language, it's part of all those restrictions, and all of those could be waived. Does that make sense to you? Or do you want me to?
Sort of, but then it also, I have the same issue with the second one, which says no alcohol or unlawful drugs, but can be waived.
Yeah.
Like, why would we ever be? Unlawful drugs? That's what I'm saying. Right, and that sort of makes sense, but I just, I don't know, maybe I'd.
So the unlawful drugs is just carryover language?
Yeah.
Because they're unlawful, they shouldn't be on you anyways.
Right.
It's kind of like redundant, but I guess you could be, you could be arrested for having them, and then you could get also arrested for a violation of this. So it's a little harsher, you might say, if you do it on one of these properties. But, you know, we can remove the language. It's, but because it was there since nineteen ninety-five, ninety, yeah, ninety-five and voted by the voters way back then, because it was the other style of government we used to have, we left it.
But I think your concern is just the fact that it can be waived.
Yeah, okay.
And was that original to the original?
No, that wasn't.
Something, why are we changing it to waiving something that we wouldn't want? That's, I don't, maybe a reason that I'm just. You know, it sounds like we do, if we're changing it, right?
I think it's just because it's in the group, in the language, and then it says, these things can be waived if you go to the town council, instead of separating, everything can be waived by item E or something.
That's really the logic. When I was putting it together with the assistance of our town attorney, we didn't exactly address this in our communications, but the thinking was to keep the language as concise and similar and small, and this just happens to be a fallout of that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, again, if you feel strongly that we should separate it out, we can certainly do that.
I don't know, I'm just sort of, with legislation and things, I mean, what, your intent should be in the language. And I get it, I get that, but I also think it sends very mixed messages when we're updating something, and then we're saying, you know, these things are.
Yeah, I can understand the alcohol and weed, but why even have the illegal in there? It's already protected.
Is it worth our time to look at the actual language and see how it reads in the actual chapter one eleven?
Yeah, that probably.
That's kind of what I was proposing here, so. So the actual language, here we go. Let me make it bigger, fill the whole screen. Maybe it's too big.
There you go.
So. Yeah, so basically, in one eleven dash one, which is the general rules across all of them, it speaks to the no fires. You see that up front. It speaks to the glass and the trash. Then it speaks to the alcohol and unlawful drugs. It speaks to parking where designated. It speaks to OHRV, and class two and three bikes not allowed. It speaks to the discharge. And then all the way at the end is where we have the clause, for lack of a better term, that says the town council or designated agent may suspend any of these rules of conduct for any person or group of people for any conservation area or portion of an area after seeking and reviewing the recommendation of the Conservation Commission. If we wanted to speak to unlawful drugs not being able to be suspended, I use the word waive when I did the thing, but the technical word here is suspend. I can pull that out and do that, or we could choose to even address unlawful drugs because they're already unlawful. It's, you know, it's really up to all of you.
If it really bothers you, I would suggest you just take the unlawful drugs out of that C.
Yeah, let me go back.
I get it. I mean, and that part helps the H.
I understand, though, what's illegal drugs is, you don't need to say it shouldn't be.
They're already illegal.
Right, and I think maybe H, to your point, covers that. I just, I don't know, I just think it's sort of weird that that and the trash, same thing, that, you know, we're saying very specifically, I don't know, just some of those things probably shouldn't have been included prior to H. And other things, you know, then there's, maybe a list would have been, these are the non-negotiables. It's, you know, no trash, no drugs, whatever, but I get the way that's written, so.
You could put a stipulation at the end of H saying that, you know, you'd break out C into two different ones if you leave the unlawful drugs in there, which I don't know why.
Just check out the unlawful drugs.
Yeah, take that out, so then that's there. But if you really wanted to, you could put all the above. Town council designee may suspend all the above except B under these rules.
Yeah, we could do that. It was, you know, playing with the language and all these things.
Yeah, which is what we're doing now.
Right, it got difficult, right? And then it gets hard to read, and then you have a police officer who's trying to enforce this, says, well, now what were they thinking here? Right, so.
And if the?
The way I left it, it just says, they have to come to you or your agent. I don't think anyone's ever going to come to you and say, can we trash your property? They're not going to seek that permission, I don't think.
No.
So.
So what's your pleasure? Do you want unlawful taken out?
Why don't I do this? Why don't I get a, talk to the police chief?
Oh.
And see if he thinks that having it in there makes it stronger, or we can have it removed.
Yeah, and I get the point of leaving it in. It's making it very clear there are no unlawful drugs, which should be obvious, however.
That's a good idea, Paul.
Why don't I do that?
Okay, yeah, this is the first reading, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I appreciate, the H sort of is your, I get it. I get what you're trying to explain.
Okay.
That other stuff is there.
After we're done, it has to be moved to a public hearing, so there's plenty of opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so what I wanted to focus on, you know, we talked, I'm sorry, did you have questions?
Questions, Andy?
Well, just on the PowerPoint presentation, and this is something that, just, and I apologize, I didn't bring this up when you were at the Conservation Commission because it wasn't front and center, but a complaint from a resident this week has kind of brought it front and center. There's a place in town for people to ride dirt bikes, but there's no place in town for people to ride ATVs. And the way this is currently written, there's no place on any conservation land for people to ride ATVs. Is that correct?
The way it's written right now, yes, but I do want to, there is a, there are a couple of places in town where people could ride ATVs right now, just for awareness, if you want to address that now or after I answer your first question, so. So, so on Greater Woods, we have some trails that allow ATV use. They're marked, they're in the stewardship plan, they're part of the trail map that you can download and use. So there are certain trails that allow ATV use now. Not many people use them. The concern came about and why the language is suggested now is that, and by the way, the second parcel is Horse Hill. Horse Hill would allow ATVs if there was a group that got together and would maintain them. So the definitive plan for the Horse Hill says that we, and it even shows which trails would be recommended. Keeping away from wetlands and endangered species and all that. But it also has a clause that says, and a state-approved group is to do the maintenance and all of that. And the thinking back, two thousand six or seven, when we did the definitive plan, was is that the body of folks that are doing the maintenance on those trails didn't want to have the extra burden of doing the maintenance of the ATV trails unless there was a group, the user group was going to help with the maintenance and all of that stuff, and that's why that was put in there. Folks who, you know, who do the trail work for hikers didn't want to have to deal with the rutting and all the other issues that happen with ATVs. So that thinking is what got us to where we are here in the proposed chapter, is so the thinking is that we're going to pull back and not allow OHRVs on any of the properties unless a group comes together who wants to help and do the maintenance and all that. And if that group comes together, they'll use the waive or suspension of rules activity with the approval of the town council after getting a recommendation from the Conservation Commission to go ahead and go do that. And if the group, the user group that wants to do it, wants to do the maintenance, the thought is, go right ahead, right? But if the user group also does not want to do the maintenance, why should that burden fall on other volunteers? Now, if the town chooses to pay Public Works to do the maintenance, that's also an alternative, right? We pay Public Works to take care of Wasserman Park and other things like that, or in whatever, if you want to do it that way. But the volunteer group, the sentiment is, is, you know, if you want the use, you have to go the whole way with it, right? You have to do the work. So that's the thinking here, and that's why it's proposed this way.
And you mentioned a state-approved group?
Well, that's the language in the Horse Hill one because you do have state, you do have state OHRV clubs, just like your state's snowmobile clubs. So if it was just four or five people getting together, the thinking back in the definitive plan was, is that really a group that's going to stay together and actually do it? If you actually had a group that had gone through and become part of a state-approved group, then you know that they've got an organization, right? They meet, they probably have dues, they probably have workdays, and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, when the snowbuds were active here in town as part of, part of Merrimack, the snowbuds not only did trail work, but they also did fundraisers and all kinds of other things, too. And that spirit was what was thought to be here. But with the language as it is now, if there were just four or five people who wanted to do it, and the town council suspended that, they could go right ahead and do that. It wouldn't have to be a state-approved group.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
I need clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, so presently, and that was one of my questions, too, because I knew that there were some trails presently existing. And this would stop all trails. Well, actually, because you're talking about sixty, let me ask you this. Maybe this is the first one. Maybe it's the number of parcels, too, because right now, we're going from six parcels to sixty-four parcels, right?
Yeah, yeah, so if you're thinking there's opportunities, just realize Greater Woods represents about eleven of those parcels, okay? Where Horse Hill is just one, right?
Right.
Because we never combined all the parcels and made a super parcel.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So.
But I knew that some of them had some trails.
Yeah.
So my concern is, and this is not you, no, you've heard me say this, the same thing with hunting.
Yeah.
When certain parcels were bought by the town, part of the, I don't want to say argument, because that's not, part of the sales pitch to the town was it's going to be open for this, this, and this, and this, and hunting, and ATV was on the list.
Yeah.
And to me, there's a certain amount of commitment that was made based upon the sales pitch that was provided to the town to bond, to pay money, to do the land, to have this conservation. So I do understand that there has to be controls, and there has to be careful consideration about where and how much and stuff like that. But I do think they should, I'm not sure how to reconcile your concerns about maintaining it, but I don't like the idea of closing it down totally, and that they have to go through the extra mile to get the idea of coming to the town council to do it. I'm not sure how to reconcile my concerns for that, and maybe I'll think about it before the public hearing, too.
Okay.
But, and the same thing now, is hunting allowed on any of the parcels right now?
On most of the parcels, yes.
And you're taking all that hunting out?
No, no, we're not. That's not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting no hunting on thirteen of the sixty-four parcels, with the majority of them already having a deed restricted anyways.
Okay, so that takes, okay.
Yeah, all right, so we're not.
So that takes care of my hunting concern.
You can still hunt on Horse Hill and Fields Farm and out in Greater Woods, all that, all allow hunting now.
Okay.
And we'll continue in the future with this.
Okay, that takes care of my concern.
And no target?
No target shooting, no.
Yeah, that came up. Is that having to do with, why?
Well, so.
I don't want to assume, I know.
I do want to address that, but can we stay with the OHRV or ATV for a moment?
Sure.
So I completely understand the sentiment about ATVs and OHRVs. What we've found is, and why there's Bear Brook, and why there's Clough State Park, where ATV is, and all them go is, they ride at twenty to forty miles an hour. they ride at twenty to forty miles an hour. Our systems are three and four miles altogether. You can cover three or four miles in fifteen minutes or ten minutes, and then you've done it. And what do you do? Do you do it again? And do you do it again? Most ATV users wanna be able to get out in the woods and go for a while. We don't have a bunch of parcels grouped together that allow that to happen, because a lot of our parcels, including Greater Woods, where we have, that are parcels that weren't conducive for building homes, building roads, and all of that stuff, and which are the same parcels that you do ATV-type stuff on, right? You can't go ATVing through a wetland. It's not my rule, it's the state of New Hampshire's rule, EPA rules, okay? So when you start pulling all the wetlands and all that stuff out, Merrimack, at this point, cause it's built out so much, doesn't have those big grouped parcels where you can really put an ATV park together and have that ride for an afternoon, where you probably don't cover the same trail more than once or so. There is some possibilities over our Greater Woods. If you look, um, if you look at the picture, you can see that's the pink area in, in the upper left.
Okay.
It's almost complete, but you see there's a hole, we call that the donut hole. If the town could find a way to purchase that donut hole, and add in a couple of other parcels, you could create that area where ATV users could be. There is access off of Wilson Hill Road, you could create a parking area, you could, you could drive in your machine, you could park it, you could run out there. You probably won't disturb much of any wetland by doing, cause it's mostly uppers, upperland, and, and you could achieve that. But we don't have that in our possession at this point, okay? So, it's out there, there is an option there. People wanna get together and get ahold of that landowner, uh, and, and actually, I think it's now part of the landowner's estate. I think the, the, the person listed has passed on, so it's now part of the estate. Um, you could, you could have, could do something. They, they, um, they timbered it a couple of years ago, the family did. Uh, so it's actually the right time where you might wanna think about doing it. But, uh, but getting back to having an area where you could have, a, a park where you can enjoy, it just doesn't exist in our town.
In terms of the size.
Right, it should have been thought about thirty years ago, right? Uh, unfortunately, that's just the nature of where we are, but we do have those in our state, so they're not far away, right?
So that's, okay.
Yeah. So, uh, but, but the, but getting back to the other part, I think you'll have to reconcile, in your own mind, Nancy, uh, the part about the maintenance. Because I know some people, if, if they feel that it's, you know, it's being overridden by OHRVs all the time, they're gonna walk away.
Oh, I don't, I don't discredit or blame that group who is spending their time to maintain there, and not wanting to have to take responsibility for an area that, one, they're not using, and two, the people who are using it aren't helping either.
Right.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. All right.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
But by putting it in, yeah, let me think about it. I just, how you can reconcile, that's my problem. How I reconcile the difference?
So, so.
Because by taking it out, it, it's prohibiting the whole thing.
Yeah.
And then having, to have the group have to come to basically propose a plan that, where I'm going to, the group will take responsibility, is basically what you're saying.
Yeah. Yeah, so you, you talked about bonding of land, so that's Horse Hill, we bonded that, paid for it, the bond has, been paid for. A lot of the other parcels didn't come that way, they were donated, um, or they were conservation dollars that were, that were spent against them. Uh, so, and, so those were outright purchases, so there's only a couple of examples where we bonded. That's Wasserman, which has its own declaration and rules that was set up in nineteen ninety-two, and it was done on that bond in Horse Hill. Paul, I think I cut, cut it all. I don't think we've bonded anything since Horse Hill, right? Yeah. Yeah, so.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Do you want me to go back to language and a few other points that I think we're gonna create some more conversation? Just, again, I wanna be as transparent as possible here.
I appreciate that.
You know, I'm not looking to, to hide anything. Whoops, did I, I, yeah, I closed it up somehow, but I'll try again. All right, um.
I should check. Barbara, do you have any, do you have any questions before we move on to language?
Uh, no, not really, other than, um, in section one-one-one-dash-three, thank you so much for translating that into English. A list of parcels just didn't do it.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so I'm gonna bring our attention back to one-one-one-dash-one, uh, D, uh, letter number two. So, uh, based on our discussion, uh, we wanted to allow for class-one e-bikes to be on the property. So if you'll notice, um, when it says, um, can't drive OHRVs, it, then, then it lists class-two and class-three, but class-ones are not precluded. So someone, uh, with this current language would be able to bring a class-one e-bike out onto the properties, which is not something that, um, that we do now. So this, that would be something new, and that was based on your recommendation. I, we did include the RSA definitions of class-two and class-three bikes here, so, so that way, it's clear what, what's intended here. And I can, I can go through why they're different, if you want, or we can continue.
Anybody you wanna, you can go ahead.
Okay. So then we get down to E, and, and basically, the current language says you can't discharge, um, anything. Um, now we're, we're now in the general group. We're, we're limiting that discharge of, uh, air-powered, spring-powered bow or firearm for target shooting, and we provide a, a definition of target shooting. This, this section comes with, um, comes with, you know, a little bit of peril, you might say. Uh, and I wanna be upfront about it, but, uh, there's two RSAs that the town can fall back on in putting this restriction in. One of them speaks to us being a landowner, and as a landowner, like any landowner, we can put restrictions on our property, including the restriction of target shooting. And, and by the way, we've had a number of instances where target shooting has become a problem. Uh, where we've had done major cleanups of areas, and, you know, TVs, and all kinds of things were brought in. They were putting, they were putting targets up in trees and shooting up into the trees, so if you miss the target, it goes for another two miles before it lands. And where that bullet goes, you have no control over, so it's just not, not, not the way we thought was good practice. And with so many different trails and people in different areas, you can't be sure what's behind that target of yours anyways. So as a landowner, you can make that restriction. There's also another RSA that says that towns can't regulate the use of firearms within their borders, uh, because the state holds that piece. So you've got two different ones. You, as a landowner, you can do something about it. As a municipality, you can't. Our town attorney has said if anyone pressured this and took this to court, not sure we would win. But to let you know, we've had this language, which included everything, not even a restriction on target shooting, in our ordinance since nineteen ninety-five. In our, in our recreational areas, we've had it, uh, on the books since, um, nineteen ninety. So we've had it for thirty-two years, that wording for at, at Wasserman Park and, and all the other parks. Um, we've had it in the Horse Hill under chapter one-twenty-eight since two thousand and five. So we've been testing the will of the, of people for a long time. It's never come up, it's never been an issue. In fact, it's never been an issue in any of the municipalities in town, so it's never been challenged in court as to who would win. So, and we're talking about a violation here, so it's really up to you all if you wanna make that restriction, continue the restriction we've been carrying, with knowing that it's possible that the town attorney could lose the case.
Thanks, thank you. Tim, can you just repeat that again? You said the, the, um, state law may supersede the right of the municipality. And what, what is, can you just say it again? I, I just didn't, might have done quick enough.
Yeah, so there is a state RSA, I have to dig it up. I'm sorry, I don't have the number in front of me.
I can find it, but what, what does it say?
It's, it, it says that the town, uh, the, the towns cannot regulate the use of firearms. And, and target shooting would be considered a use of a firearm.
Sounds like New Hampshire.
I just, I just wonder like.
Well, it's, it's, it's unfortunate, because it takes low control away, but I won't get into the politics of it all.
Yeah, overarching.
Yeah, I mean, and it also, I mean, if there's a public health risk or safety risk, for the town not to have the ability to protect the public.
But it can.
Well.
The counterargument to that is you can set up standards or environmental situation where you can try to maintain that safety as much as possible. For example, you could say, if there's a sandpit in the park, that's where it will be, right? You allow it, but you wanna be able to put it in a, logistically in a place for target shooting.
Until all the neighbors started calling.
Yeah, right, thank you, thanks.
I mean, but at the same time, I don't want some town in New Hampshire to say, you gotta now have a permit, and the town council's gonna decide whether you get a weapons permit. I'm glad that New Hampshire says, we're not gonna do that.
Right.
That's where they, that's how they do it south of us. You know, one person decides whether you can purchase a firearm or not. So, you know, it, there's, there's. You know, there's, there's definitely benefits to having that, that state law there as well.
Right. No, I don't disagree.
So the, the lang, Paul, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask a question, Tim.
Yeah.
Right now, on the parcels that we do own, I know some are deed-restricted totally about hunting and all that.
Yeah.
Do we allow target shooting on any of our properties, or is this something new that we're incorporating? Are there some properties that we'll, we used to allow it in and not?
We don't allow it on any of our parcels.
So this is nothing new, it's just definitively putting it in here, in the, in the document.
In the document, right, right. In fact, we had this discussion probably in two thousand and eighteen, when, when we were allowed to put some no-target-shooting signs up.
Because you were having a problem.
Cause we're having issues, yeah.
For having, making a mess.
Yeah, and, and we, we brought DPW out on a Saturday cleanup, and we took three truckloads of trash that was all shot up with bullet holes, all the way up to fifty caliber. We're talking big projectiles being sh- shot. So, um, yeah, it was a little out of control. So, um, this does not preclude someone who wishes to carry their firearm onto the property, um, not, not doing any of that stuff. It doesn't preclude someone from protecting themselves when they're on our property. None of that is, 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 you know, we're not trying to do any of that here. We're just trying to say no-target shooting. So.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, but I wanted to be upfront, Paul, did I cover the attorney's concerns properly? Okay.
One, one other question, Tim.
Yeah.
Because we got the question, now, I think somebody came, maybe sent it to the council, about hunting. So hunters would say, well, we go into some of these lands because it's safer for us to zone in our, our, X, Y, Z scope or whatever, before we go in the woods and try to zone in when we're shooting at an animal, which could cause it. We have never allowed any of that at all on our properties.
We, well, we, I don't think we've, I don't think we've ever voiced that you can't do it, right? So you're right, they like, hunters like to, to set their scope and make sure that they get it right. So if they're going after a target at a hundred yards, that when they have their scope on it, it's gonna hit the target at a hundred yards.
Not to the left or to the right.
Yeah, yeah, or up or down, or whatever else. Um, so, uh, we've never said you can't do it. Do you consider that target shooting? Um, in this case, i- i- it might be. But, you know, if you, if you really wanna do that, you know, can you do it in your backyard, on your own property, instead of our property? I don't know, I, I, I don't know.
So I don't think you can in some of the neighborhoods in town.
Probably not, right?
Probably not, yeah.
Um, not without someone making a phone call, uh, but maybe you can, right? So.
I'm just, because I know that's been a concern of some of the hunters, and they brought it up to the council, that, you know, we wanna go out in these areas, and we're not, we're not shooting a hundred rounds, we're five or six rounds to try to zone in our scope.
So, 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 think, think of the real situation. This is gonna be enforced by a police officer. The police officer has a, has some discretion to use, just like they choose whether to give you a ticket or a warning, right? If you're out there and you're, and you're sighting your scope in a safe environment to where you know what's behind, if in case you miss, cause it might not be sighted properly and all that stuff, it's up to the officer whether or not to actually cite you with a violation. He might just say, or she might just say, I, no, you shouldn't do that here, cause you're just gonna create issues and get people nervous. Or, um, if it, if it was reckless, the officer could use other tools within their rules and laws in order to say, well, if you're reckless, now you're doing something that is illegal, da-da-da-da-da. So, uh, i- if you, you know, if you wanna be, if you're concerned about that, um, I would trust our police officers to do the right thing at the right time. But in this case, you know, the way it's worded, it does say no-target shooting, and decided you have to shoot an inanimate object, or you're hunting and you're shooting at a real, at real wildlife, so. You know, I don't know how prescriptive you wanna get here, is really what I'm trying to say.
See, I would interpret someone taking three or four shots part of preparing to hunt versus target shooting. But again, I would like to think a, a police officer would have that thought, too.
Correct, I would think, I would give them the credit to know the difference.
Hopefully.
Yeah, but it's, right?
Things to ponder.
Yeah. I, in, in reality, I think we're gonna very rarely see someone actually get a violation. I think what we're gonna see is someone says, you know, an officer saying, this is not allowed out here. You know, if you, if you do this again, this is what's gonna happen, um, you know, stop doing it. And, and, and the reality is, is what they do today is they charge them for trespass, but it's not clear. Now we're actually making it really clear that these are the things we don't want you doing. So, um, so this was kind of asked for by our law enforcement people years ago. You know, what are the rules? Which ones can we enforce? If they're not in an ordinance, we can't really enforce them. Well, we're, we're giving them the rules in an enforceable way now.
That's a really good point. Has this been reviewed by the police department?
Yeah, the police department has, has checked it out, yes. Actually, all departments have looked at it, yeah.
Cause I was wondering if they, you know, find it helpful that them are not helpful, okay?
Well, I just, sorry. Not, not to get off track, I just wanted it out there that, because that's been a concern, that's been brought up through council about, you know, letting me cite my, my scopes or X, Y, Z, my gun, my brand-new gun that I just got, or my bow, before I go out in the woods and have the potential of shooting it for the first time. So, just so that people understand that this is the rules now on our property, on these sixty-four parcels, this is the rules.
Okay.
Okay. So I, I think that pretty much covers it for all of that first section. One-one-one-dash-two speaks to the, to the, the two parcels where you can't be there at night, but it does have a similar clause, but it's under letter C, that allows you to, or you're designated to suspend. So if a group does wanna go out there, uh, at some point, and, and have an overnight on, on Wildcat Falls, you can allow that. So, so, so you're aware of that. Also, the language is here that allows the Conservation Commission itself to suspend that overnight rule on either of those two parcels for a commission-sponsored event. So if we wanted to have a moonlight, snowshoe hike, we don't have to come to you to ask, or the commission doesn't have to come to you, cause I'm no longer part of the commission, I'm just, uh, here with, supporting them with our vice chair in the, in the backseat here, so. But, uh, but yeah, it allows that without having to go through all that. So, so then, then we move down to one-one-one-dash-three. This one does not have that clause that allows you to suspend, because most of these are deed-driven, and that's why it's here, and you can't really do it. But again, to be transparent, not all of them, so we did include some other parcels that are adjacent. Uh, or, um, there is one of our parcels that I believe doesn't allow hunting, but doesn't speak to, um, OHRVs, but it's never been allowed out there anyway, so we kept it that way. Uh, and I know for the council, back in twenty-twenty, I put, um, a separate paper together on these thirteen parcels and outlined them all and shared it at that point. And I think I sent copies to Nancy and Andy, since they became counsellors as well, um, so we can go over that, so. So this one, this one-one-one-dash-three is thirteen parcels, uh, and, and again, um, it doesn't even allow class-one e-bikes because of those, uh, cause the language in the deeds say no motorized of any kind. So. So then, to bring your attention, then the one other item, instead of saying hunting, under, under letter C, it speaks to the RSA that talks to taking of wildlife. There wasn't something in the RSAs that, that defined hunting by itself, okay? But there was the taking of wildlife, which included trapping, as well as, um, you know, shooting wildlife. And there's a couple of other things I can easily, um, you know, Paul could send you the full RSA so you could read it through. Uh, but some folks were concerned about fishing, and fishing is covered by a different RSA, and we're not citing it here, so. So yes, you can go out on Horse Hill and fish the ponds, and there's some good fish out there, if you wanted to, or even the others, you know, uh, from Wasserman Conservation Area. or even the others, you know, from Wasserman Conservation Area. You can, you can go out and fish into, into Natticoop Lake, you know, so. So, and then, so the last thing here is one-one-one dash four, which is the violations. In the current language, it's, it gives complete discretion to the judge. In this case, we've changed it. Town attorney recommended that, or made this recommendation, says, you know, you could do this. So we've created a tiered approach, so the first time it's a hundred-dollar fine, second time it's two-fifty, three or more it's five-hundred, up to the maximum allowed, which is a thousand dollars. And that's per year, calendar year. And it's left at calendar year, it makes it easy to, to, to figure it out. And the money goes back into the general fund, which is similar language we have in all our, all our chapters. And then we've listed all the parcels. The, the original one, because it was only six parcels, also gave a street address. We could do that here, but it gets rather long, but if that was desired, that could be added.
I personally would like that, even if it's just as an addendum.
And I think we've done that with, like a fee schedule, see attached fee schedule. And then what you do is, is you just say, designate a conservation areas, see attached fee sched, see attached schedule. And then if you wanna add one, it's not three readings, just to add a property. Because if they, if somebody donates a piece of land and they wanna include it in this chapter one-eleven, we'd have to go back and first read, second read, third read, just to add the property. If it's in, in, in that kind of see-attached schedule, you could add it to that schedule. And it makes life a little easier to add properties. If you're gonna change language, you have to go through the three readings. But if you wanted to add a property, it kinda just makes it easier. And I believe we did that when you were back on the council with some of our fee schedules when we rewrote it, is to take them out of, of the ordinance itself and put it as an addendum.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Barbara, do you have any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Andy, Nancy? Anything else to offer?
No, so what do you wanna see next time? Do we, do we come back with, with the addendum and, and the language speaking? Or you're gonna get an input from the police chief about unlawful drugs, so, okay?
Yeah, I'll think about my stuff too. But I can, in the meantime, accept a motion to move to a public hearing. So moved. Motion by Nancy Murphy, second by Andy Hunter. And I would suggest the counselors and any of the public want to provide any suggestions or have concerns, keep an eye open for when the public hearing will be, if it obviously passes.
Public hearing will be in two weeks, so it'll be June ninth.
Okay, so let's take care of the motion first, okay? Roll call vote, Nancy?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
I'm yes, so it's four-zero-zero.
Great.
So it'll be June ninth, a public hearing?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you very much, Tim.
It's, there's a lot of changes, a lot of complicated, but the way you laid it out is very, very concise, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Tim, you always do such great work. So comprehensive, yeah, thank you.
Tim's like, alright, I got two, by the end of June, I'll be off.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, now let's get to the minutes. Okay, minutes for town council meeting Thursday, April twenty-eighth. Motion to approve, or what? Looking at the time?
Well, I'm just saying it's, if Councilor Woods would hear, we'd need a motion to
I know.
Extend the meeting past ten o'clock.
I already thought of that.
So, that's why I was looking at the clock.
Okay, does it?
I move to approve the minutes of April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
As presented?
As presented.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Andy Hunter, second by Nancy Murphy. Any corrections? Nothing, Barbara?
I'm good.
Okay, no changes?
Come on now.
Okay, okay, a roll call vote for approval, Nancy?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so it's four-zero-zero. Okay, let's move on to the minutes of May fifth. Motion, anyone?
Move to approve the minutes of May fifth, twenty, twenty-two, as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Andy Hunter, seconded by Nancy Murphy to approve the minutes. Any changes? Hearing none, roll call vote to accept, Nancy?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, that's four-zero-zero. Nice. Okay, mom, comments from the press, the silly questions. Comments from the public, nobody else is here, comments from the council. Nancy?
Oh yeah, I just wanna remind everybody that the New Hampshire Hot Dogs for Alzheimer's is, event is coming up on June thirtieth, from eleven a.m. to seven p.m. in the Our Lady of Mercy Church parking lot. And I know Rob Bergen and, Bob Bergen has arranged for a drive-through option this year as well. So, so for some people, just wanted to give you a heads up that that's happening. I think the, I think it's still five dollars, and it's two hot dogs and a bag of chips and a soda. So, I just encourage everybody to, to come to them.
Drive-through is a really good idea.
Yep.
Did, did you say June thirtieth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thursday, June thirtieth.
Barbara, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Barbara, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Okay, roll call vote, Nancy?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and I wanna thank you again, Barbara, for being available by phone so we could get all this done. Thank you. Okay, so moved, we are now adjourned.